Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oak City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 23, and it is 6:00. Karen, could you please do roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Here. Scott, Donaldson, could you start the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Yes, Mayor, it would be my honor, but I would really love to see you lead us maybe one of these times.
The next one.
If everyone could join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for public comments. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council and that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time that matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So, please raise your virtual hand. I am not seeing any virtual or on-screen hands for public comments.
No, me either.
So... Everybody's... okay, so I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move on to our very first presentation, which is an overview of SB 1383's organic waste reduction requirements. I know that Tim Flanagan, who is the general manager of our Waste Management District, is here. I have not seen Rob yet, but...
It'll be Phil Monopoly tonight, Madam Mayor. Sorry, so Phil, I see Phil there, so sorry, I had my wires crossed. And who from Hilton, Hilton Ferencoff was doing the presentation?
Okay, so Phil, we'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, might share my screen quickly. Can everyone see my screen and hear me okay before I get started?
Yes.
Yes.
SB 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate adopted in the last 30 years, all the way back to 8939. The bill specifically targets short-lived climate pollutants, with the city's primary focus being methane reduction through expanded organic waste diversion. Tonight, I'm going to start by touching a little bit on the background and context of the legislation. Then I'm going to transition to the regulatory requirements. And finally, I'll preview the city's path towards compliance. So to provide some background and context, California has really seen the impacts of climate change manifesting themselves through longer droughts, cyclical droughts, dried-up forests, wildfires. And we've been seeing coastal erosion through the state's rising sea levels. So SB 1383 aims to address that climate change. But why focus on methane gas in particular? And for starters, methane is 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide over a 20-year horizon. And currently, California's landfill accounts for 21% of the state's methane emissions, which makes it a high-value target for methane reduction. Specifically, the decomposition of organic waste is the largest source of methane at landfills, which is why the legislation aims to target this material. Before diving into the nuances, the regs, and how the city is going to comply, I want to touch a little bit on the definition of organics. In the context of SB 1383, organics includes green waste, yard waste, wood waste, food waste, but also fibers such as paper and cardboard. So this definition is a little more expansive than prior legislation. And it's also more expansive than what we think about in the common vernacular or the more traditional definitions of organic waste. Now, food waste was included in the commercial definition under 1826, but for residential and multifamily, there was no food waste diversion requirements. As you can see in this chart, approximately 2/3 of our waste stream is organic material, and that's what's being landfilled. So 2/3 of what we throw in the landfill is either food, or lumber, or organics, or other materials that could be recovered. And then we couple that with the fact that 1 in 5 children is food insecure in the state of California. There's an obvious opportunity to close that loop, get the food, 18% of it, what we throw out, out of the landfill, and get that to people in need of food, the food insecure population. So that was really the impetus behind SB 1383. And there's a lot of dates here in this presentation, but I want to focus, starting on 2022 and moving forwards, and some of these other dates have passed. So January 1, 2022 is when the regulations take effect. And that's when most of these programmatic requirements I'll talk to you tonight about will take effect. Beginning January 1, 2024, you'll be required to take enforcement actions. Over the first two years for noncompliant generators, you'll be educating them on their need to comply. But beginning January 1, 2024, there's going to be enforcement notices of violation and potentially fines for those who aren't willing to comply or participate in the programmatic requirements. And finally, the ultimate goal is a 75% reduction in organics that's sent to disposal and 20% recovery of edible food that's sent to disposal. And it's important to note that those are statewide targets. The legislation does not allow CalRecycle to place specific targets on the jurisdiction, which leaves them with programmatic requirements. They can't give you your own leeway to choose your programs and hit a number like they did under prior legislation. Now they're left with telling you how you're going to comply, how you're going to reduce food waste to help the state achieve this overarching number. So the first programmatic requirements are to provide organic waste collection service to all residents and businesses. This is something that's going to be achieved through your franchise hauler, not a lot of effort for the city. When the franchise agreement was originally signed, it included yard waste, and SB 1383 was not a thing at that point. But the writing was on the wall that food waste was going to be included eventually. So the franchise agreement allowed a mechanism to open up the franchise and bring in food waste collection processing, which is going to help mitigate some of the cost impacts associated with the new programs. You're also going to have to establish an edible food recovery program, which is going to involve educating tier 1 and tier 2 generators, large grocery stores, large caterers, things like that. And then also, you'll have to inspect them to make sure that they're complying and they're recovering edible food, either through a contract with the food recovery organization or service, or they're delivering it themselves. So we need to make sure that they're not intentionally disposing of edible food that could be recovered for human consumption. Additionally, to have some successful programs, you're going to need to conduct education outreach. Residents and businesses aren't going to know how to participate in these new programs if they're not alerted to this. And the annual education requirements are actually not that expansive. You're already providing quite a bit of education surrounding programs, so it's going to be more a changing of the material and media that's going to them, not necessarily implementing a lot more media or extra steps. Additionally, there's procurement requirements. Once all this organic waste gets out of the landfill, it's going to turn into compost and mulch and renewable natural gas. And they need people to buy that. So in turn, you're going to be required on a per capita basis to purchase certain recovered organic waste products. Then additionally, you'll have to help the county with capacity planning. They want to make sure that there's enough organics processing capacity and the capacity to obtain the edible food and give it back to the community and food insecure families. And then finally, in 2024, that's when you're going to have to start taking actions against people who aren't complying. For the first two years, they want you to educate people that aren't complying. It gives them an opportunity to start following the programs and the rules. But at a certain point, the state wants you to follow up with people and start issuing notices of violations and ultimately fining them if they're not willing to comply or participate. So the state allows multiple compliance pathways. You can have a one container collection system where everything would be placed in one container and be processed at a facility. But this requires very expensive facilities and the capital investment to achieve the diversion standards there. It's something that hasn't really been done yet in the state, so we're not recommending that. They also offer two container collection services, which again, that's going to be multiple different technologies that you don't currently have, which is going to be expensive and a lot of capital investment. So ultimately, a three container, source-separated solution with the food and the green waste being commingled, but not mixed with other trash and recyclables, is likely the best solution. You're well taken care of with MRWMD, they have a facility. So compared to most people in the state, you're in a much better position. CalRecycle estimates about 150 to 200 organics processing facilities will need to be built to handle this, but you're already well positioned. So you know, the majority of the time to give these talks, we're telling people, find a facility or build one. So you're in a much better position to comply at this point through the district. There's also the edible food recovery requirement. And again, this is something that you probably won't be doing individually, it's more of a regional approach. Food insecurity crosses borders. And people who can't get food in your city may travel over to a neighboring city to use a food recovery organization or service. A large commercial generator from another city may be donating to food banks in a different city within the county. So a regional approach to this is the best. And MRWMD currently has a tax set up, and they're evaluating the best potential options and pilot programs and how this could all come into play in the most efficient way possible, with the least impact on both budget and staffing. Additionally, there's the education requirements, where you have to annually educate generators about the benefits of methane reduction and organics recycling. And you must provide print or electronic media. I talked about a little bit earlier where it's being done already. So while the content of this media is going to change, it's not going to be a huge expansion of sending an extra 10,000 newsletters every year. It's just the information in the newsletter will have to be tailored specifically to what's included within the bill. And CalRecycle's sense of legislation, and finally, it's come out and said that they're allowing multiple compliance pathways. So you could use print media, you could use the city's website, Twitter, you know, Instagram, any type of social media. So they're allowing for a combination of approaches that best meet, you know, what you think will serve your community. And then there's procurement requirements as well, which require the procurement of compost, renewable natural gas, or electricity. And there's a minimum per capita procurement target, it's 0.08 tons per person within your jurisdiction. And then depending on the commodity, there's going to be a different conversion factor, since some of these commodities have more benefit to the environment than others. Again, we're going to be looking to handle this through one of your service providers. If it's going to the district for composting, then they could potentially wheel that compost to a farm or use it elsewhere, so that way you're not necessarily having to procure, you know, thousands of yards of compost for your own use. You can find partners who can use it on the city's behalf or designated. Also, you'll need to comply with the Public Contracts Code, specific sections, which require that you purchase recycled content paper and printing and writing supplies if they're the same price or less expensive than comparable virgin materials. So there's not going to be a huge price increase. You know, right now, recycled content paper is more expensive than normal paper. But that's a sense it's more expensive, you don't have to buy it yet. It's once it becomes the same price or cheaper, you'll have to start moving in that direction, buying more recycled content. So for now, it's really limited to just monitoring the markets. And with everything going on with the national sword and blue sky, it doesn't seem like the paper markets are going to be getting any cheaper soon on the recycled content side. So you're probably okay for a while there. And then ultimately, as a jurisdiction, you're responsible for generator compliance. So you'll have to do some inspections. The key piece here is that you're going to have to implement ordinances that support SB 1383. That's something to recommend in Q3, Q4 of this year. It'll be coming around, and you'll have a model ordinance to work from, and you'll be seeing that. In addition, we could talk a lot about delegating these to franchisees, which will require an amendment to your franchise agreement. And that's again, something you should be expecting later this year, probably summer, midsummer, Q3. You'll see, you'll start seeing some more action on that. And then beginning, once you get these programs all ironed out, your ordinances and your franchise agreements all negotiated, you're going to have to start doing some education and compliance monitoring. So that's going to start in 2022. That's going to result in annual compliance reviews, which is a desktop review of the account service levels and make sure people have the appropriate organic service level. And again, that's something that could reasonably be delegated. Your franchise hauler is, they have account lists, they understand what services they're providing, so they could provide that annual desktop review to minimize the impacts on your budget and staffing. There's also route reviews to check for preventative container contaminants. So they're going to do lid flipping to see if people are throwing organics in the trash, if they're throwing organics in their recyclables and contaminating them. And again, that's something that we envision won't be handled by city staff, but will be handled through the city's franchise hauler. And then finally, beginning in 2024, that's when you're going to have to start issuing those notices of violation and penalties for violators. And they have prescribed times and penalties for the different violations. If you're a repeat offender, then it goes up. We don't want the same people violating over and over. And we had touched on this a little bit earlier, but organic waste recycling infrastructure is really the biggest challenge that the state's facing. We encounter it all over. People just, you can't find an outlet for this material. But you can luckily. MRWMD has a facility, and they've been doing local composting, and they have the digestion infrastructure. So that solves a really, really large challenge that most people are facing. And then CalRecycle's oversight begins in 2022. They do allow some waivers for mandatory service and the programmatic requirements. Unfortunately, you don't qualify, you don't have a low population as part of the JPA, and you're not a very rural area by their definition, so you don't qualify for that. They will give emergency circumstances waivers, so if there's some kind of a quarantine on the transportation of organic materials, or there's equipment shutdown or facility issues, then there'll be a temporary waiver. But ultimately, they're going to be overseeing your compliance. You won't be responsible for non-local entities, things like state agencies and local education facilities. Those will be monitored by CalRecycle, and they ultimately have responsibility over them. Although, it may not be uncommon to get some questions about if your schools are recycling organics or providing education, you've seen that in prior legislation. And then beginning in 2022, if you find someone's not complying, you just educate them. But then, starting in 2024, that's the issue notice of violation. CalRecycle, if they come in January 1, 2022 and find that you're not compliant, they're going to issue the city a notice of violation. And from there, you'll have 90 days to correct that notice of violation. There are potentials to be put on a corrective action plan, which could extend your compliance timeline by up to two years if they find that you're doing substantial effort. And substantial effort means you're doing everything within your reasonable power. So inability to assign, if you don't assign resources to comply, that doesn't count. If you decide you don't want to put forward a rate increase, that doesn't count as substantial effort. The state has a very specific list of what qualifies. And then finally, what can you expect? What are the next steps? There's subcommittees that have been established, and they're working on all of the different elements of this, from the waste collection to the organics processing outreach, the food recovery and monitoring reporting task. We're trying to evaluate, what's the most efficient approach you can take at a regional level to minimize the impacts on each particular city? There's economies of scale if you do a lot of these programs together. So it's actually be evaluating what the best approach is. And they've also been working with regional partners like the food bank, county health department, all of these different parties who are already out in the field engaging with some of these activities. Food recovery is not typically a solid waste function or a public works function. So we're engaging with those folks and people who have been working on food insecurity in the communities to help leverage their experience and hopefully partnerships. Additionally, municipal staff, haulers, MRWMD, the Salinas Valley Recycles are all working in conjunction to come up with this regional approach. And as I had touched on earlier, your critical path really is amending your franchise agreements, which will result in new rates, garbage ordinance updates, and any of the peripheral programs. You're probably need to codify enforcement, establish legal authority if you're going to start issuing those as a violations and fining people. And then just develop outreach and monitoring system. The outreach may be handled primarily through partners. But while a lot of this is going to be delegated, ultimately, you're responsible. So they'll need to have an internal monitoring program to make sure that everyone's complying with the contracts, you're getting the data you need to report to the state, and the system's running the way it's anticipated. So that's it for our presentation. There's a couple links here in the staff report with some further information on the short of the climate polluting bill. So with that, I will open it up. Any comments or questions? Happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. So let's start with the council. Ms. Lintel.
You're muted, Pat.
Karen, can you help her unmute?
Okay, now I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Thank you so much for the excellent presentation and the explanation of all that goes into it, all the problems that can exist, and the various steps along the way, and the dates of enforcement. And thank you so much for being here, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, I was wondering, with the three, I guess the three container strategy, is that going to be three additional containers to the three they already have? Or is it some addition to the existing three?
You want me to... That's a great question. It's going to be the three you currently have. It would not be in addition to the current three, with the exception if there's people who are not complying, if they only have two containers, say they don't have a current green waste container for some reason, and then they would have to get a third new organic waste container. But generally speaking, it would be the three you currently have.
Good. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson.
No, I have no questions. Thank you for the presentation, Phil, great job.
Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. I actually had some questions, and your presentation actually answered some of them. But I do have a question about the TAC. I'm wondering what the timeline is for them to kind of figure out some of the logistics in terms of education and outreach and who's monitoring. And I know it's hard to know, but I'm just sort of wondering in general, what's the timeline there?
I can handle that, Phil, because I know you haven't been involved in all those discussions. So that's a good question. The Technical Advisory Committee was, you know, established some years ago to help us deal with the original development of the Model Franchise Agreement. So respective city staffs are on that, as well as all the haulers, as well as our partners across the valley and Salinas Valley. So the TAC is working through right now. The first deliverable is going to be on the ordinance and the adoptions to the franchise agreements, so that'll be the first thing. There are still some premises that the Technical Advisor Committee is working on as to division of labor or responsibilities, as to who will do what in regards to the outreach. You heard mentioned that there is an obligation under the new legislation and the regulations to do what's euphemistically referred to as lid flipping, which literally is exactly what it sounds like. People are going to have to walk through the neighborhoods and lift the lids on the carts and look in them and write down if there's contamination in there. That will most likely be done by a third party, because the drivers of the vehicles, they don't want to be dismounting from the truck. So someone would need to precede them, sort of walk ahead of them to do that. We haven't yet come to a conclusion as to who would do that. And your final question on the public education and outreach, our Director of Communications, Zoe, Zoe Schoetz, is on the call tonight. And that's part of what she and her team will be heading up in combination with the other cities. And we'll make an allocation of what will the district do, what will the haulers do. There'll probably be not a lot of public education and outreach on the city's part, but they'll be happy to link some of our outreach messages that we put on your website and the like, and probably involve some community stakeholders as well in the process. So it's pretty comprehensive. We don't have all the answers yet. This was meant to get to the cities and give you a general outline of what's coming. And we will be coming back to you. This will probably be the first of several presentations to you and the broader community as we work through this process. This is a huge undertaking and probably, if not more substantive in its reach than the original 8939 legislation was that was passed way back in 1989. So we'll be back to you probably several times before the end of this calendar year.
Okay, great, thank you, Tim. And just so everyone knows, I know I've spoken to Sustainable Delray Oaks about this, and I'm excited about doing some outreach to promote that, so we're on board. So, thanks, that's it.
All right. Excuse me, I just had a couple of questions. So we renew our annual... I don't know if it's a contract with you every year, but it's an annual re-up every year in July. It's due July 1st. Are you suggesting that we will have a price and we will be able to understand who's doing what when by July 1st?
I wish I could say, yeah, we would know that, Madam Mayor, but probably not. So you're a little bit ahead of the curve here. And district staff is working on our budget for this upcoming fiscal year. I can tell you at this point in time, as your representative on our board knows, that staff is more than likely not going to bring forth a rate increase on our side. And perhaps the only rate increase you will see this upcoming fiscal year is the contractual cost of living adjustment that you will see with green waste recovery. It's a prescriptive cost of living increase that's managed by HF&amp;H and is a strict allocation of costs that have increased. You'll probably see more of this as we work through this upcoming fiscal year. And if there are rate changes, and we anticipate there will be some, more than likely, those will manifest themselves in your next rate-setting process next fiscal year.
Okay.
This fiscal year, probably not a significant adjustment.
Okay, that's good news, because we had a couple of years that were pretty rough. And I just want to make sure, the TAC is also looking at doing an edible food recovery program? It makes sense to me that we would do it as a region. Is that kind of the direction we're hoping to go?
Absolutely, that's correct. And as you can imagine, right now, many of the food recovery outlets have been dramatically challenged by the impacts of COVID.
Yeah.
And the food outlets, and it's sort of a very challenging circumstance where the demand for food has increased, and the sources and outlets for, and the sources for food have decreased. So we are working with them to see that we come up with something that works for both sides of the valley, that makes sense for the residents in the peninsula, as well as where a lot of the outlet sources are on the Salinas Valley side. And that's why you see our agency and Salinas Valley Recycles trying to work together on this, so we do not have a duplication of effort. And our folks that are food insecure in the peninsula, we have an outlet for the delivery of food to them, and as the same for the folks on the Salinas Valley side. That's our goal and our intent. And I think us working together will achieve that instead of working at cross purposes.
Exactly. Well, I think this is long overdue, frankly, from the food insecurity perspective, as well as, I am a gardener. That compost is invaluable stuff. So tied to that, so there's a purchase requirement from the city. If residents go out and buy the compost, do we get credit? Or is that solely the city having to buy things?
Yeah, that's really the city buying things. And I will also mention that one of the benefits that you have in your current franchise arrangement is that the district is in the process of developing the transition of our landfill gas into vehicle fuel, which will fuel the refuse collection and recycling trucks that go through your town and the other peninsula cities. That will be a significant count towards that procurement level that your city has to get to. And that was something we instituted. I see Dennis Allian is on the call, and where Dennis was, our board chair, those were a long-term strategic plan that we put together so that we'll actually take our landfill gas, which comes from the decomposition of the organics in the landfill. It cleans it up and allows it to be put into the vehicles, which... It cleans it up and allows it to be put into the vehicles, which park at our landfill, and they fill up overnight. So they will fill up overnight with that renewable natural gas, and then they'll go back out in the morning and pick up your material. That will account for a substantial part of the city's procurement. And then obviously, you can purchase compost for your city parks, medians, landscaping, etc., and that will round out your procurement requirement for organics.
Wonderful. Tim, you have done an amazing job on all of these really wonderful programs. So thank you. I'd like to go out to the public and Louise has her hand up.
Yeah, good evening. Um, I was, I lived in Germany 25 years ago, and I am very familiar with with triple sorting my household waste. Germany has been doing this for 30 plus years, as far as I can recall. So I have no real issues with it. I am at the condominiums here in Delray Oaks. I am on the board. And we kind of have started prepping for this. I knew it was coming. We knew it was coming. We have already initiated one spot and are working on enclosing it as one of the places to put these containers. Now, we have big containers. Three yarders, four yarders. Right now, we have two, I think they're two, two yard yard waste containers. When we put up our spot, our test spot, and mentioned that, you know, we knew that this was coming, the main concern is uh, vermin, critters and and insects and uh, things like that. So that is something that's going to have to be addressed, I think, in your outreach to the customer. I know from personal experience, although Germany doesn't get very hot very often, just like kind of like Monterey, we did have, you know, a couple of weeks in the summer where it got real hot and that brown container got really smelly and the flies got really heavy. So, you know, what is, what do we do? What does the customer do to to minimize this? What kind of lids are they? The current containers that we have for normal trash have plastic lids that one of my 85 year old little old ladies almost had a heart attack the other day when she put her trash in, the raccoon jumped out. I'm assuming that it's a hard lid that's can be sealed somehow. Again, these are things that I'm running through my head and that the customer is going to want to know.
All right. Thank you, Louise. Um, Phil, could I ask you to stop sharing your screen? We need to put the clock up for public comment, and that helps us. Thank you very much. So let's go to Jim Clark.
So I understand that this is one of those things where you can ask questions and Tim or Phil can answer. And as I listen to the extreme amount of effort, we talked about education, advertising on TV, website updates, the time and energy for city councils to come up with, you know, the the education and then the the requirements for penalties if you screw up down the line. Kind of if you can address, what's the return on investment here? I it sounds like we're going to spend $100,000 and maybe save 20 grand down the road, you know, just approach that question. And then the other is, I know just with the plastics issue and paper cups issue that we have all been living with for years seems to change on a semi-annual basis. Like just earlier, maybe the beginning of this year, the end of this, the end of last year, we were suddenly told that black plastic is no longer recyclable. And, you know, I can kind of keep up with that at almost 70 years old. But my mom, you know, I really got to help her with that. So anyway, those are two issues that do you see the rate of being able to participate this successful enough versus the number of hand slaps that you both talked about in your presentations?
Thanks, Tim. Tim?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can address those. So first of all, to Louise, thank you, Louise, for your comments and thanks for getting ready for this coming in. That's good stuff. And one of the ways we can address those issues that you talked about in terms of odor and and vermin is collection frequency and the integrity of the containers. And so those, the hauler runs a pretty good shop and they're obligated to do that anyway, and will have some experience with that. And you already have most of that material already in your trash container, and now some of that will just be shifted from your trash container to the yard waste container. So we hope to mitigate those problems by the integrity of the container and the collection frequency. To Mr. Clark, thanks for that. I mean, the 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 ROI, as you mentioned, that was sort of at the front end of the depiction is that this was originally passed under the original intent of this was under AB 32, which was passed when Governor Schwarzenegger was the the governor. And the direction of this was to mitigate greenhouse gas. And so this really isn't a recycling bill, even though it has a lot of recycling and diversion in it, really is a greenhouse gas mitigation. And we that are at the landfill business, we don't, we don't feel as picked on because they're also going under after dairy farms and cows and the like to mitigate their methane emissions. So any place there's a methane emission, the state is targeting. So we don't feel so singled out. So the ROI in that is really to decrease the amount of methane going into the environment. And you hit the nail right on the head when you wanted to talk about the complexity in markets and and market development and what is and isn't recycled. We, unfortunately, we opened our material recovery facility the exact month that China passed their national sword policy, which banned any imports of recyclables into China. And so for the last three years, really, on a global basis, we've been scrambling to identify new markets to get material into. One of the things that the district did under in cooperation with all the cities is we developed a recycling app called What Goes Where. And it's easily downloadable. It's free. And your residents can type in, when they download the app, the material that they want and their zip code, and it will align to tell you what to do with the pizza box, what to do with the detergent container, what to do with your soda pop bottle, what to do with your hazardous waste. And this is a relatively inexpensive way to push that information out to the folks. And I I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think we have well north of 10,000 downloads of that app in in our community since we originated it a couple of years ago. And we in the marketplace have to scramble, just as you mentioned, on how to keep up with what is and isn't recyclable. And we do our best that we can to educate the consumers yourselves about what is and isn't recyclable. And we will be doing more outreach and effort to sort of embrace some of those items that we know are easily recyclable, and that's those plastics that are one and two and plastics number five, and where possible, make use of reusable containers. And if we ever get to go back into restaurants and eat indoors again on a regular basis, you know, we can bring our own Tupperware containers to the to the restaurant. And when we take home half of the lasagna, we can bring our own container there once the pandemic has passed. So we appreciate your identification of the challenges that we have on on recycling. I mean, you hit the nail right on the head. And and that's what you, that's what you have us for and a hauler for to try and make it easier for you and your constituents.
Thanks, Tim. Um, the other thing I would mention as far as the ROI is the methane that's produced and captured.
Yes.
Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a positive.
We make five megawatts of electricity. Thanks for pointing that out down there. And we're in a partnership that will be working with our neighbor next door, M1W. And we will be transferring renewable energy to them, hopefully within the year. And they will be making their renewable water from our renewable power, which is a very, very unique thing across the whole country. So, you know, you can have your renewable power, making renewable water. It's pretty unique, the co-location of those two locations. And our partner, M1W, is a good one to work with on this.
Great. Next thing is solar panels over the water, right? Yeah.
Exactly. And when some wind turbines as well. So that's our future.
Um, Bill, Bill? Cronin, Ragsdale Cronin. Sorry about that.
Unmute. Yeah, just a couple of things real fast. Number one, I've got friends that live out in the county. You were talking about lid flipping. Apparently, Waste Management is doing that with a camera on their trucks. And they're receiving these horrible bills from Waste Management going, you put in la 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 in your box. They're denying it. So there's got to be some accountability at some point because you're going to get people, unfortunately, they go go around and scrounge through your recyclables. Now, they're going to be dumping bad stuff in your boxes. So that's something the TAC probably should be looking at as they go forward, is the security of your container in front of your house when you place it there. Most of us put it out the night before. We put ours out in the morning, but still somebody come by and drop, you know, a gallon of motor oil or something else in your bucket and cause you to have some headaches. Secondly, you talk about enforcement of all organics and things like that. Where I'm at, my family, we probably would dispose of less than 1% of the organics that come into our house. We have chickens, we have worms, we have composting. We we grind all of our green waste. We literally recycle, like I said, 99.9% of the stuff right here on site. Is that going to become an issue in the future? And that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Um, well, well, first of all, let me celebrate your your waste reduction. You're like the poster child for where we want everybody to be in terms of zero waste. And that's where our organization is trending to 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 have is waste minimization. So that you're 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 the exact sort of a person we want to celebrate in terms of your waste production. So no.
Give credit to my wife. It's not me. It's her. It's her deal, not mine.
Always good to give credit to your wife. That's the safe thing to do. So I I think the best, the best thing I can say is that you would not be impacted by this. So the fact that you don't have organics in there is is fine. And so folks that do home composting or make their own use, they're they're absolutely fine. It's just the folks that need to use the service it's provided will have that collection outlet for them. So they can take their kitchen scraps along with their yard waste, put it in the cart, and it'll get collected on a weekly basis. On on the lid flipping problem, you're right, Waste Management, you know, technology has advanced a long way. And, you know, I used to run a hauling company some years ago, for full disclosure. And we had just started with digital cameras way back when. And so the technology has advanced. They make the trucks safer in terms of their operation. Waste Management, I know, is working through those issues. What we expect would be more of a boots-on-the-ground approach and not necessarily to start with a technology fix. So this would literally be with a third party that walks the streets ahead of the collection route and lifts the flip, lifts the lid and looks in there. And there'd be a stepped approach so that no one is penalized immediately. There'd be a tiered system of notification, outreach and education if folks were inadvertently putting the wrong things in the wrong in the wrong cart. So that'll be developed as we go through this process over the next year and a half. And it'll be a long way before we start penalizing anybody until we can get our education and outreach to them.
And, excuse me, any other public comments? Pardon me. I am not seeing any. So any last minute council comments, questions? Seeing none. I'd like to thank Tim for coming and Phil for presenting and Zoe for hanging in there. So it sounds like we'll see you again soon.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate your participation in our programs.
Of course. All right. Thank you very much. So let's move on to our second presentation, which is on the four-door rec trailing greenway update. So I reached out to Tamsey, asked them to come and just let us know the next steps, because there has been a few delays, and we were expecting to start this a little earlier. So I'm thrilled that Mike said yes and is available for this evening. Did you want to share a screen, Mike, or?
Yes, thank you. I will in a in a moment. So just good evening, Mayor Kerr and members of the council, City Manager Hoy. I'm Mike Zeller. I'm a principal transportation planner with the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, and I'm the project manager for the four-door regional trail and greenway 218 Corridor segment project. So very happy to be here tonight to give you an update. And similar to the last presentation, I kind of see this as the first of many that we'll be back doing. So just wanted to give a brief update kind of on the the work that we've been doing and our plans for some public outreach in the coming months. I'm joined tonight by Lindsay Van Paris. She's the Consulting Project Manager for from GHD, as well as Steve Groupgo. He's part of the design team from GHD as well. I don't believe Kendall Flint is on the the call tonight, but I'm sure many of you are familiar with Kendall from her work at the Four Door reuse authority. So she's part of our team working on the the public outreach aspects. I'm sure you'll be hearing more from her as well. So just give me one moment. So try sharing my screen here. Okay, so what we have up on the the screen here, this is the proposed alignment for the project. The the project limits, it runs from Fremont Boulevard in the city of Seaside, near Laguna Grande Regional Park, and runs parallel to the the state routes, 218 Canyon Del Ray Corridor, running behind City Hall at one point. And then we're proposing to have a tunnel under 218 near Carlton. So this will provide safe access from either side of 218. And then the the alignment would generally follow along Carlton and then down along Plumas and Seaside near the the elementary school. So the the proposal for this project, if you're not familiar with it, the four-door regional trail and greenways envisioned is a regional paved multi-use trail that connects communities surrounding the former four-door with education, employment, business and recreation. And really, the kind of the key vision of this is that it's an accessible trail. It's a trail for all users that you would just as easily see your family with a stroller or someone in a wheelchair out there, along with people riding bikes and pedestrians as well. So this first segment, it's envisioned as a part of a ultimately a larger regional trail network in Monterey County, 24 miles of regional trails that would connect into the four-door National Monument, the existing trails there, up with the Monterey Bay Central Resina Trail with connections to Cal State University Monterey Bay, and then through communities in Marina, Seaside, Monterey, Delray Oaks, and unincorporated parts of Monterey County. So we're very excited to be getting this first segment underway. The segment is fully funded all the way through construction, which is great. We're very fortunate to receive a state active transportation program grant to to fund the design and the construction. We also have Senate Bill 1 Local Partnership Program funds on this project as well, and then also matching with local Measure X dollars. So that was our local transportation sales tax. So we've been able to leverage a small amount of Measure X dollars to bring in over $10 million in state funding for this project. So it's really fantastic. So we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on the project, and we've And we've kicked off work on the final design, as I mentioned. So that'll be the preliminary work to get us ready to start construction in the latter part of 2022. And so we're working to refine the alignments. And we're expecting to work closely with all the local jurisdictions, as well as the local communities along the route throughout this process. And to start the process, we do have a COVID-safe site visit that we have planned to walk the route with the representatives from each of the jurisdictions that run along the route for the trail. So I believe Aaron Haraway will be representing the city at this. And we also have some follow-up meetings to discuss some issues that come up from the site visits. And, you know, we understand that this is a very challenging segment that we are beginning with. And there's potential issues with buttlands near Work Memorial Park. And we will require sensitive solutions that respect the local communities as well that will be bringing the trail through. So I'm planning to have an open and regular communications with all of our partners. And as I mentioned, I'm happy to come back and give a more in-depth presentation at a future council meeting. But in the coming weeks, we'll be kicking off our public outreach. And Lindsay, is this, to put you on the spot, could you talk a little bit about our public outreach plans?
Sure. Thank you, Michael. As Michael said, I'm Lindsay Van Paris. I'm the project manager with GHD overseeing this phase of projects. And I am looking forward to coming back and communicating with you often. We have a robust outreach program. We're partnered, GHD has partnered with Kendall Flint. And she will kind of be leading that. We have our draft announcement that the next phase is coming out. And so that will be circulating here shortly. It's just a brief notice that, don't be surprised if they see, if people see us out in the field with our vests and masks and everything on. We are doing various different types of outreach. So we'll be doing agency-focused outreach where we're focused on talking specifically with agencies to identify issues of concerns, identify key stakeholders, and develop and maintain an expanded stakeholder database. And then we'll also be doing focus groups with different organizations and groups like bike and pad enthusiasts, business and employer interests, environmental advocates, on and on. So we've got quite a few of those planned. We will be releasing newsletters, updating the Fortag website with current news regularly. Up to 15 community presentations at Rotary's, Kiwanis Clubs, Chamber of Commerce, things like that, workshops. So we'll be doing six workshops right now, given COVID. We'll likely be kicking those off primarily as online workshops. And then as the project progresses and restrictions get lifted, that may pivot and change. But right now, we are planning for primarily online workshops with mixed ways of getting out there to the community. So it'll be traditional mailers and things like that and non-traditional ways, potentially flyers and signs, QR codes, all these fun things that over the past year, hopefully, we've all gotten used to using. Again, we'll do social media, collateral development, a project website. And what is really fun and something that I'm excited and passionate about is, as an engineer, I can get into the details and talk to you about grades and slopes and ADA compliance. But what does that mean to you and what does that mean to the corridor? So we will also be preparing some visualizations as we go deeper into the design that will really show you what we are thinking and what this will look like. And that will hopefully make it easier for us to communicate with everyone in a way that's easy to understand. I think that's all I have, Michael.
Great. Thank you, Lindsay. And that's what I had as well. So we'd be happy to take any questions from council members and from anybody in the public.
Let's start with the council. Ms. Lintel.
I have no questions. Thank you for a great presentation to both of you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Gagliotti?
I have no questions.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, my question is probably best for Lindsay to answer. The six workshops that you mentioned, is that the opportunity for residents to give their input?
Yes, that will be the opportunity. And also when we come and present at councils and commissions, that'll also be another place for the community to give input. And we'll also be posting interactive workshops online that will go outside of the workshop. And so they will have an opportunity to go online and make comments and interact with the project in that way as well. So we are planning to use a program called Social Pinpoint, which, if you are familiar with the US 101 Project South of Salinas, it was something that was used there as well. It's really interactive map where you can click on it, comment on certain pieces and parts. And it's easy to use and it will be in multiple languages, well, English and Spanish.
Okay. Any tentative dates on the first workshop?
Right now, no, as we are just kicking off and having our first site walk. But I would, I would say it will be this spring or summer is what we're targeting.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Shirley?
Thank you. Nice presentation. I'm wondering, it sounds like Michael mentioned that most of the design is done. So I'm wondering the inputs that you get from these workshops from residents. What percentage of the design are they contributing to? Or is it elements that they're contributing to? What part? I missed, because I'm assuming it sounds like most of it is already sort of set. And so I guess I'm wondering what part is flexible in terms of feedback from residents?
Well, right now, the project is at 30% design. So there's quite a ways for us to go and quite a lot of input for the community to be able to provide to us. So we are early, truly in these stages.
And Michael, can I add to that?
Certainly.
We are, the first phase of the project was the environmental clearance. And so with that process, we've got a disturbed soil area or an area of potential impact, area of potential effect. And that area has been cleared environmentally through the multiple agencies and jurisdictions. And so we are limited to keeping the trail within that area. And that'll be clearly demarcated on our exhibits and plans to show what our constraints are and where we're limited. But besides that, the type of trail, whether it be a class-one facility, whether it be asphalt or concrete on one side or the other, we have latitude and flexibility to do that at this point. But we are constrained within the limits of the environmental document.
Okay, great. And then just one more question. I think on your map, there were security features. And I was just wondering if you could tell me what that means?
Michael, did you want me to take that one?
Yeah, please.
So it's an opportunity for a potential security feature. So we want, again, as Michael said, we want to make this a trail that is inviting and safe and that all ages and all abilities feel comfortable using, and particularly crossing 218. The proposed plan is to do a tunnel under 218. And so the potential to do a CCTV security camera or the emergency push buttons that you sometimes see in parking lots. Those are options and opportunities that we are open to exploring at those locations just to improve the safety, the feeling of safety and security.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I was wondering what kind of, how you were going to update us as far as construction. So I'm really happy to hear that you'll be updating websites. And it sounds like you'll be communicating really well. So that makes me really happy. So thank you for that. That's it for me. Thanks.
So I just want to be clear. It sounds like a very extensive outreach. And am I to understand that there will be 15 presentation and six workshops for the Delray Oaks section?
No, that is, sorry, that is for the entire alignment of the project. So we're going through city of Monterey, Delray Oaks, Seaside. And then Caltrans is through that, Parks is through that. And so it's not for the entire 24 miles. It's for the segment that Michael showed on the screen. So we will invite, we will not preclude if we do a presentation for Seaside. We will not preclude Delray Oaks from participating. But it is six workshops for the entire portion of this segment of the trail.
Okay. So this is, this section goes through, you know, our entire city. And it touches where people live, which, from what I understand, is the one and only segment that is as kind of city-focused. And so it would be great if newsletters and mailers and things like that could be more tailored for people that live in Delray Oaks and for people that are very concerned about a couple of these segments. So, yeah, so it would just be helpful for us, for residents listening to this, you know. They, if they don't listen as far as my question, they're going to think we're going to have six workshops. So that, let me think. So if we could have as much notice as possible, that would be fantastic. Because I have, we all have a lot of neighbors that are excited and concerned. And so I'm really glad you guys are here. I am really looking forward to this project. Did I hear construction in late 2022?
The current schedule for this segment is to have the project ready to list in August of 2022.
Okay.
So then construction would be able to start thereafter. So there would still be the bidding process to bring on a construction team. So it could be late 2022, early 2023.
Okay. And I also just want clarification for those that are on the line and those that may listen later. This segment is the only segment that has funding currently, correct? Out of the, is it eight or 10 segments?
There are, well, that is correct. This is the first segment that has full funding for construction. There are multiple other segments. There's three primary loops for the trail and that those can be broken down into different segments. So we are actively looking for funding for these other segments currently. So the great thing about the trail is that a lot of the pieces have independent utilities. So we can break off small chunks and do different segments as we're able to get funding to move them forward.
But currently, it's all about Delray Oaks.
That's right.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. I'm going to go out to the public and see if anybody has any questions, comments? Karen, are you seeing any? Jim Clark?
Here we go.
Yep. There we go. I always try to get the video going at the same time. Hi. Wow. Delray Oaks, first in line. Well, I guess that goes to show that a lot of credit goes to the previous mayor, Jerry Edelen, and all the work he did. Well, he was a member of the TMC board for getting this thing started and on the drawing board nice and early. So I think just saying, good job, because everybody seems very excited. Well, most people seem very excited about it now. Should go out to him. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none?
Any public comments?
Jim, you're not muted? So I'd like to come back to the city council. Any last-minute questions or comments? Ms. Lintel?
I have one comment regarding the underpass over to the Frog Pond area. Is that cast in steel or is there still a potential of having an overpass rather than a tunnel?
I believe the plans to use a tunnel, but that's fairly set at this point.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right, Mike. Lindsay, thank you so much for coming and we look forward to seeing you again very soon.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again for having me.
All right. Take good care.
Take care.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member want to pull any item? Seeing none. Dennis, would you like to pull an item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull the financials. I think it's 5B3.
Okay. We'll do. Any else? Anybody else? Okay, so Dennis, do you have a comment on them? Before you do, I'd like you, I'd like to note for everybody that the financials that were put in the packet were the incorrect financials. They did not include the updated budget that was approved, goodness, last month. So Dennis, if it had something to do with that, it's being worked on, but please.
Okay. Yeah, well, I understood that. But I think mine are generic enough that you don't necessarily need to refer to the figures that are in there. However, that may be the reason that I have these questions. First of all, the, I know the statements of revenues and expenditures, which I understand is maybe inaccurate. I'm noticing in here, if these numbers are correct, that the sales tax and add-on sales tax seem to be far exceeding what was projected. And the, which is good news. Now, on the other side of the coin is the cannabis tax. And I remember at the last meeting, we talked about the cannabis tax that there was a, there may be a lag in the collection of that.
A deferral.
Yeah, deferral. So that could be made up. But the numbers in there are very encouraging. I hope that they don't get worse in the correction. And also, I was surprised that the Seaside Fire Department bills is, it's almost like we must be having good luck in not having any fires or people getting an ambulance because the Seaside Fire contract, I don't know if that's a delay in the way the billing is done or what the case might be there. But I just noticed those things. And I'm curious as to what is included in the capital improvement line. And I don't know what that is, you know, normally we do capital projects. It's good to have a dollar amount in there so we know how much money is being spent. But I don't know what's included in that. And I wanted to point out, and I can do this by an email to people, but I think there is still some work that needs to be done on some of our streets. Specifically, Via Verdi, near the top of the hill as you come up from Highway 218. There is extreme root damage being done to the roadway there. And there's a large, large lump in the road caused by the roots growing out from that cypress tree, which I understand may be taken out by PG&E because it is interrupting with their lines up there. But that tree has been a source of problems for that portion of the road. So I'm hoping that there's, somebody's taking a look at that and seeing what should be done to correct that problem with the road. And expiration dates for the restricted funds. I believe there are some expiration dates on some of those. And it would be good to include those, I believe, in the report so that we keep a focus on making sure that we're using those monies before they expire. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. I can tell you, yes, I agree on the sales tax looking very good. But we also need to keep in mind that we lost Stone Creek Kitchen and we lost the sandwich shop. So we're all just kind of, excuse me, holding back on that. And if And uh, if Jeff wants to answer on the timing of the seaside fire capital improvement, and I like the idea of having expiration dates on the special funds. Jeff?
Absolutely, Mayor. I, I can answer some of that, probably not fully, but uh look into the rest. And Dennis, all your other uh issues were noted with the street and I'll begin with, with Ron. Uh, we'll include the expiration dates uh in this next upcoming uh budget prep. Uh, we're changing a lot of line items. We're streamlining the budget. We're putting more information uh in uh, in, in every uh area that we can. That'll probably last a couple of budget cycles because we keep finding new things to do. As far as the uh fire billing, uh that would be something Karen could answer. I would imagine it's a delay in billing. It's the contract amount. It always is the contract amount and it's usually squared up by the end of the fiscal year.
That's correct.
Doesn't change based upon workload or anything like that. The capital improvements, uh, I believe we had two major capital improvements this last year that we did. One was finishing up our, our roadways and uh another capital improvement that we did was the solar panels on City Hall. Karen, do you know of uh any other ones we've initiated this past year before I got here?
No, those are the, the two biggies.
And uh we've, we're, we're holding back on, on any other large item capital improvements through this fiscal year because of COVID and revisiting some things that we may be doing next year. Streets are among them, curbs. Maybe some walkway infrastructure, things like that that we'll look at. Hopefully I got all of those points or at least uh close enough. As far as the sales tax, it is uh accurate. It is up. However, as the mayor said, uh, we're looking at cannabis taxes and see where those come in and they come in uh not as uh, they come in sporadically and some of it has been uh deferred and we're working on a solution to that and or a timeline, finding a timeline when those may come in.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, coming back to council, any questions, comments, consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I, I moved to, uh, we accept the consent agenda as is. Uh, I didn't see any changes that were really, any material changes in the, in the, in Dennis's comments. So accepted as is.
Okay.
I second.
All right. Karen, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Wonderful. Let's move on to new business. Uh, number six A's, consider appointment of resident Bill Ragsdale Cronin to the sign ordinance subcommittee. Bill, would you like to uh say anything?
Um, no, I just threw my hat in the ring. I saw we had a vacancy on the sign committee. Um, as you know, I applied for a planning commission spot not too long ago. Still just trying to get my feet wet in city politics a little bit and something that I can handle with my current workload and things outside of city life. But yeah, if we need a body for that, I'd be happy to help out. Pretty much it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments? Bill? Ms. Shirley.
Yeah. Bill, I'm guessing you're generally available um in the evening that we were meeting, I think on Wednesday evenings. I don't, I mean, maybe it'll change, but are you generally available?
Unless I'm at a city council meeting or a planning commission meeting, I would be.
Okay. Well, I'm really happy you're doing this because I'd really like to complete this project. So thank you for volunteering.
Ms. Lintel, did you have a question, comment?
Yeah, yes, I have a question. Did we increase the size of the committee or did uh somebody resign?
No, last, last meeting, we discussed this because there's three of us that are now um on the council. And so I bowed out and so we need, because Ms. Shirley became a council member and is no longer just a member of the public, we needed another member of the public.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We did increase the salary though. That's what I, we talked about that.
Yeah.
All right, John. I'm, I'm, that's fine with me.
For everyone out there, that was a joke.
Yeah.
We make nothing. Um, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll come back to the council. Any last minute comments, questions?
I, I think Bill's a great choice and I move that we appoint him to the sign ordinance subcommittee.
I'll second.
Okay. Can, uh Karen, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. All right. So it passes unanimously. Jim, do you have your hand up? For?
Yes. Just well wishes, Bill. I hope you can bring this thing to a conclusion, buddy. Go get them.
I'll do my best.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Uh, Bill, thank you so much for volunteering and I'm looking forward to also this uh coming to fruition with your help. All right. So let's move on to six B development update and discussion regarding city-owned properties. Uh, I'll turn this over to our acting city manager.
I'm glad I remembered to unmute there. Um, Mayor, uh, council members, members of the public and visitors, thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to say that staff has put together a staff report and wanted to bring it uh to our city council an update on our development process. In October of 2018, the city posted a request for qualifications for development teams after getting significant interest in our Fort Ord property. Uh, several developers reached out to the city. The city put together a uh selection, uh a RFQ package and a selection process. Several steps were initiated in that selection process. Working towards uh an exclusive negotiating agreement. Eventually COVID put a halt on any further progress and that particular process lay dormant until uh late September, mid to late September, when then city manager Pick started uh reaching out to the other developers and uh gave me direction as I took the acting city manager road to uh role to reach out to those developers that were still in the process. During that time, other, another development team has shown interest. We are currently uh working with them to include them in the process, in the current process. They have submitted a response that we will share with the council soon uh on the RFQ. But prior to that, I thought it would be appropriate to have uh basically two things tied into here. One is an update of where that process is and, and also a, a possibility uh to give you some ideas of where that process can go moving forward so that staff could hopefully come back next month and receive some direction on that particular matter. Additionally, in our February uh strategic planning session, the city council gave direction to staff to present development options for all city-owned properties that focus on economic feasibility and opportunities. As part of this presentation, the second part of this presentation is uh an overview or a, a status on that process and a scope of work and a, a definition of a scope of work that uh EPS and David Zender have put together to give you an idea of how much work would be involved in doing a data-based significant overview and perhaps uh a, an estimate on, on some costs. Right now it looks that's around the seventeen thousand dollar range, but it would be a, an overview on all city-owned properties, including the two hundred and thirty plus or minus acres of fora, north of South Boundary Road, the eighteen plus or minus acres of farmland, south of South Boundary Road, the city's former RV storage lot and the seventeen acre parcel. So I bring these two items uh in a presentation to council to give you the information. This is just information at this presentation and staff uh expects and hopes to bring both of those items separately to council next month for direction. I will uh turn it over to David Zender. He has uh the lead role in this and of course Denise Duffy, D D N A is here uh to, to assist him. Should uh any questions need to be directed towards, towards uh her. David, thank you for, for being here.
My pleasure. Um, thank you, uh, city manager Hawn, and good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm David Zender, a managing principal with Economic and Planning Systems. I see quite a few familiar faces here. I've been working with the city um for a long time on uh various projects with uh many of you in, in the past and happy to be giving you this update this evening. As mentioned, um, I'm working with both the city manager as well as Denise Duffy, who's with us tonight. And I'm going to just mention to Denise, um, feel free to chime in at any point during this uh presentation. And city manager Hawn, the same applies to you. So I'm just gonna take you through a little bit about where we are in this process of, of uh seeing um through the uh evaluation of development potential of the four-door piece. And uh so we'll talk a little bit about where we are in that process and the sort of the five-track process that we see going forward from here. And then we'll talk a bit about the, the economic analysis that we think is important in terms of supporting that, that five-track process and then also your own city council retreat in terms of wanting to make the most of all of the uh underutilized and undeveloped parcels uh that you have in the city, be they uh best uh oriented to development or habitat or other uses. Just one thing I would say about all these parcels, um, the city is approaching build-out with the completion of of the four-door parcel in particular. And um so it's very, very important to get it right. And so we want to be sort of uh very um orderly and, and procedural about how we go through this process, make sure that we're getting adequate uh community input, city council input. Um, and have thought this through really carefully because we're gonna get one chance to do it right. So um basically where we are at this point, um, and thank you, city manager Hawn, for the uh, the sort of the the history on, on the parcel and the process. Um, at this point, we have two developers that are pursuing the project. Uh, one is the McGregor McGowan Group out of the San Diego region. And then the second is as a, a firm called City Venture. Both are very capable developers. Um, they pass scrutiny in terms of uh commitment quality in their past projects, access to capital, uh they're experienced and have a good track record. And um, and they both understand the importance of thinking about not just market conditions and successful development, but you know, making sure that we're taking care of the environment and, and compatible with the environment and the community and, and the connections. And so it was great to hear about the uh, the Fort Tag Trail. Um, and that's a, that's a key piece of, of how the city is coming together that folds in with all of the city's remaining parcels. So it's a really exciting time, I think, to be um seeing through the sort of the final pieces of, of the city of Delray Oaks as, as they may come forward, if, if the community is willing. And so these, these two developers are, uh, both understand the importance of, of going through this sort of stepwise progression. Uh, there was a third developer, uh, his name is Ralph, Ralph Barelli. Many of you are maybe familiar with Barelli. And um they, they bailed out of the process. Um, they have a lot of work going on at Deardon station and San Jose and other really large projects. And so they felt in all fairness to the city that, that they had other sort of priority projects at this time. So we're down to two, but two very highly qualified developers. Okay. So I am going to uh basically take you through a, very briefly, a process going forward from here. And then uh a little bit about the parameters of the economic analysis that is embedded in that process. So with that, I'm going to do a share screen. Okay. Is that visible for everybody?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So really this first piece is an update to the developer selection process and steps to initiating negotiations. As I mentioned, we're on a five, we have sort of a five-track process that we are using going forward. And here they are. So this is a summary of, of tracks one and two. Track one is characterized as a legal track in terms of, of ensuring that um, that we are abiding by uh all of the relevant state law. In particular, there was a new state law that uh became effective this year. Uh, and that is AB fourteen eighty-six, which is a clarification and extension of the Surplus Land Act. And basically the thrust of this law is to uh clarify when properties that are owned by municipalities are deemed surplus. And if such properties are deemed to be surplus, then the city has an obligation before it does anything else with these, with these properties to ensure that um they are not subject to uh uh interests of affordable housing developers. So basically the thrust of this track, which will be led by the city attorney uh will be to uh reach out to applicable entities and agencies to uh understand if there is interest uh in the city's parcels for affordable housing. Now I think that we're all aware of the dynamics in the Monterey Bay area. We know that the demand for affordable housing is effectively infinite. Um, there is um, you know, every need to, to build more of it. And that's something that, that I should say our developer uh applicants understand very well. So regardless of, of on the four-door main parcel of two hundred and thirty plus acres, it is very clear to both developers that they will have to satisfy the city's affordable housing obligations. And if the community feels strongly about, you know, additional requirements, um, there will be an opportunity to, to work with the community to get those interests on the table. So this is sort of uh seen as a, about a three to four week evaluation of outreach. Now, when Dino Pick was city manager, he and attorney Brian Finnegan went through a process of just this. There was a surplus land act in place at that time. It wasn't quite as onerous as the current version. And there was a process of going out to all agencies, public agencies that might have an interest in using the uh, the, the property. And there was no, there was no interest at that time. This requires us to really to be diligent and go back out and do it again. Um, so basically we have to clear this hurdle because the last thing we want is uncertainty and confusion in the development process. We want everything to be as clear and uh straightforward uh for both the public sector and the private sector as we march through this um evaluation of, of uses that may be beneficial to the city. But that's track one. Track two is really city community discussions. And so as the city manager mentioned, you held a very interesting and, and I thought thoughtful retreat where many um sort of objectives were discussed among the city council. And um as such, we think it's important to continue along those lines and, and to continue that dialogue. And so uh, and we'll come to this, the um, the second part of this presentation will delve into this in a bit more detail. But the, the key question here is really understanding the opportunities and constraints around the, the properties that the city holds, not just the four-door piece, but the eighteen acre piece, the city's RV corp yard, et cetera. And then um really what we want to make sure uh of in this process is that as, as the city approaches build-out, you've got the right ingredients in your city between residential and commercial and recreational, all the components of what makes a city work. And so really we're gonna need to understand, for example, um, how much uh commercial development potential is there for, for these sites? how much commercial development potential is there for for these sites? And if you're leaking commercial sales to other cities, is there a chance to recapture any of that? And why or why not? And then looking at other perhaps commercial uses that could also add to your property tax, sales tax, and other municipal revenues. So we really want to make sure that not only is this, you know, process environmentally and community compatible, but sets up a long-term fiscal sustainability for the city that will keep you going in perpetuity. So I think that's a really, really important element. And a lot's been said over the years about fiscalization of land use. We're not trying to build big box to generate a lot of revenue here. That's not the idea. The idea is to provide the appropriate uses that perhaps tier off of appropriate residential development and creative balance, but also an overall structural fiscal benefit to the city so that you have the means by which to fund your your excellent police force, your your fire services and everything else, community development and and other really important objectives. So that is something that would, we would go out and collect the information and then bring it back to you and present issues and options in a community workshop forum. So and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Tracks three, four, and five. So while all, and these are all effectively simultaneous. But but there's some some staggering in the schedule. So we want to do these first first two tracks initially. And then fairly quickly follow up on those through discussing the developer submissions. And so we would be effectively reviewing the the qualification statements that have been provided and critiquing those and laying out strengths and weaknesses for consideration. And so we have both of those in in hand at this point, and they're both very good. And so it'll be, you know, our job to sort of distinguish the finer points between these two submissions. Track four would be then to take that information and conduct interviews. And we would try to cluster this fairly quickly. We want to keep momentum going, but we don't want to race it through either. We want to, you know, kind of strike that balance. Right now, we have two really good entities. They may have other opportunities, so we definitely don't want to park them out in left field and take a year, two years. I think, you know, it's important to sort of maintain momentum, but we should take our time to the extent necessary to ensure that we're doing this in a sequential order that everybody agrees with. And so I didn't put down dates on this because those are still being determined. But track four would basically follow up on the evaluation of the submissions and provide an opportunity for for not just the city's consultant team, but for the City Council to do interviews of each developer and ask the tough questions, see how they respond. Make sure they understand what they're getting into and what's important to the city. And then track five would then follow on that to select a developer and move into what are called exclusive negotiations. There's an exclusive negotiation agreement that would be signed. And that would, for a period of time, ensure that there is a one-to-one negotiation going on. And then if that negotiation should falter, we would go to the backup option. Okay? So that is, in a nutshell, sort of the larger process that we're moving through. Now, a little bit more about the economic analysis that really is important to satisfying track two, which is the outreach to the community. So I should mention this, this would not be a long study or a large study. This would be a very concise and quickly executed analysis, looking at several parameters. And we've put those down here. I mentioned earlier, sort of this notion of of sales tax leakage to other areas. Do you have an opportunity within reason to reclaim any of that? In addition, if the Fort Ord piece, for example, develops as a predominantly residential project, do you want that to be amenitized with with retail on-site? Or are there better locations in the city for retail amenities, retail uses, and other commercial uses? So you know, I think it's important to to think about this in terms of envisioning envisioning the city at build-out. And how do you want it to look? And how do you want it to function? As a part of this, we would be looking at not just retail, but but also office prospects. And you are relatively in relatively close proximity to the medical center over in in Monterey, Stones Throwaway. And we have seen that in Ryan Ranch, there is sort of this periodic development of medical office space. So that may be an option here. You you may be able to do some of that in Delray Oaks as well. And then similarly, industrial uses also have obviously a possibility of of enriching the city's budget. And so cannabis obviously is one of those options, but it's not the only option. So we should think about the complete spectrum of commercial development that may be appropriate in the city of Delray Oaks and where that should go, simply put. Task two, and this is where Denise comes in, would be a summary of key sites. Now Denise is already really up to speed with this. I think this graphic comes out of her work. And this is simply a this, this, this graphic shows just miscellaneous lots with potential for accessory dwelling units, but they're also, it's also a good identification of of some of the major undeveloped properties in the city. And those are really the Fort Ord main parcel, the seventeen-acre parcel, the eighteen-point-five acre parcel that's next to the seventeen-acre, and then the behind the City Hall, the public works slash RV storage piece, where, by the way, the Fort Tag Trail comes through. So that's a good example of of how you want to get it right. You want to make sure that the uses along the trail and the uses next to City Hall fit within parameters that you agree with, that are logical, and that that work for the city as a whole. Okay? So we'll go through these. And in task three, we'll basically look at issues and options around these different land uses that I mentioned for these different parcels and and give you the benefit of of our experience and our expertise and our analysis. And then coming out of that, we will then have a number of questions and key issues that that we think should be put to the community. And so this would be potentially a citywide survey. And we'll we'll figure out the exact approach methodology for that. But but we think it's critically important, whether it's a community forum or a survey. It's really important to make sure that there's a level playing field for the entire cross-section of the community to weigh in and make their voices heard. So and then that will then lead to further discussion of how does the Fort Ord piece really fit in? And how do we see the cross-section of uses there? And our two development partners or prospective development partners, we're only going to pick one, are eagerly awaiting this input. And they're both, I would say, very interested in in working with the community and understanding what you want. Nobody wants to do a crown-down. Nobody wants to impose something that's that's not sought after. So I think the this is really an important process for providing not just certainty for the community and and certainty for the community's leaders, but also certainty for the private sector individuals that may be investing quite a bit of of equity of their own into these projects. So that is the summary of of our process going forward. And I would invite Denise or or City Manager Hoyan to to weigh in here with any additional thoughts or comments.
Denise, I'll defer to you if you have anything.
No, thank you, David. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, my City Manager. I just wanted to clarify that the map that was shown was from an earlier version of the Housing Element Site Suitability Analysis, which is what we're required to do for housing element updates. We went through this process in twenty nineteen, doing it now in twenty twenty-one. And did not include the full site of the former driving range, now the worry. So that is the site, this project, per the city requirement, per the city direction, is focused on sites that are owned and controlled by the city. So that can be added to the equation. Is currently no, under what at least, but I wanted to clarify that. Other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thanks. That's a really important clarification.
Thank you, Denise. Thanks, David. Mayor, Council. To me, I think this is just a good starting point with a new council to discuss where we've been, the status of where we're at, and the possibilities moving forward. Again, staff's goal is to parse both of these out with a proposal for the study and approval of that study if you so desire. And also, direction on the steps moving forward for the RFQ to bring back to Council next month for further clarification and direction. Mayor?
Okay, thank you for that. Let's start with Ms. Lynn Tell.
Yes, I have a question, and this is regarding our Fort Ord property. When we have a workshop, so the public can suggest their ideas for this development, will you, and I don't know if this is a question for David or for Denise, would you be bringing any recommendations for a city our size to present sustainable development so that we can meet the requirements requested by the citizens, the residents, as well as financially, I mean, we we obviously have to have some commercial to sustain our budget. But there's like, how much residential, how much commercial, how much affordable housing? Do you have, either one of you have any recommendations? Or would you be presenting any recommendations at a workshop regarding percentages of of whatever properties they they use?
Yeah, great question. And yes, there is, we have to do the the number crunch first and then bring back our recommendations. We do have a sense of, you know, general relationships between, say, residential and retail. There is industry rules of thumb that we can use to get to sort of a shorthand understanding of those relationships. However, this is too important to just go with those. And so we want to do some targeted supplemental analysis to basically drill down and understand really what your potentials are. And given where we are with with the retail landscape, and there's a lot of dynamics, it's a very quickly changing part of the economy with online sales and so forth. So much of the retail that would come along would most likely be population-serving. These would be things that that the citizens of Delray Oaks would be using on a day-to-day basis. And I I'm not expecting, although, you know, I I think that it's, we have to go through the process, that there would be sort of any kind of destination concept in that equation. So we need to go through the process of understanding kind of the opportunities and constraints from both a market standpoint and then a physical development standpoint. And Denise is is sort of more of the physical planner between us. So she's going to help us to kind of understand the do's and don'ts there. But we definitely want to start the community discussions with a little bit of parameters around sort of what works, just so that we can take advantage of what we know today and then build on that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, Mr. Gagliotti.
Um, yeah, David, the, my question really kind of tees off on on Councilmember Lintel's question, and that is, is I'd like to get an understanding what the delta is from the work that's already been done. I mean, you've been working on this for you and you, it was a Dino project, you know, initially, probably three years ago. And and then I think we, Dean and I even went up to Sacramento to kind of start fleshing out some of these things early. So what's that delta that's supplemental? I mean, how much more do we really need to do? We we there's really not much different. We we know how much residential we actually need to put in there just to meet our housing element. But what is the, you know, how much supplemental time do you need to, I guess, you know, refresh?
Yeah, not much. I think that we can cut through this in about three weeks.
Okay.
For max, but this is a quick turnaround. We're building on everything we already know.
Right.
And as you mentioned, we've already done some very substantive analysis
Right, right.
of the site. We know what we're getting into. We know the dynamics around site build-out and and, you know, sort of water supply and how much development that buys you.
Right.
So we don't have to start from scratch here. We're we're basically, you know, starting from a fairly informed level. And then I think one of the key questions is just, how do the other lands owned by the city fold in? Because we want to make sure that if there's a need to sort of direct some of this energy to those properties, we want to do that and and sort of think about the best urban form and and overall performance for the city. So I think it's really just a sort of a a marginal update, if you will.
You know, on that last question, I mean, I think we we can ask that question, but that question's been asked several times. And we we know where people don't want development, and we really know kind of where development needs to be kind of focused. I mean, I I think that's going to be a pretty easy, pretty, you know, short set of questions to ask and then a pretty quick answer.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be a long process.
Yeah.
We don't want to keep people waiting in suspense forever on this kind of thing. I think we can let's hit the chase.
Yeah.
And get on with with things.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Just to add to that answer, too, I think what's different, an additive, is a survey and an outreach on a citywide basis that is, you know, at today. And what's different is also what's the market today post-COVID that David's going to bring to the economic analysis. I mean, we're just the the group that's doing the, the land hasn't changed, the constraints haven't changed. So that's all there. But I think those are two distinctive differences.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, I really like the methodical approach to this. A great job, David, laying all of it out, the process. And to add what Denise just said, I love that we're having the input upfront in track two. And I think that's important, not only to all of the council members, but also the folks within the public, our residents. So it's, it it's great to see that upfront in that track two piece. And then going back in track four to ensure that the developers have an understanding of what the public wants. I think that's a critical step as well. And above all, kind of also talking about what Councilmember Gagliotti was alluding to, that we we maintain that momentum. There's been a lot that has already been accomplished and to continue that momentum as we go along. So I I look forward to the next presentation on this. Thank you, David.
Very good.
And Shirley?
Thank you. Thank you, David. This is my first time meeting you. So thank you for coming and and presenting. I do like your approach as well. I I am concerned with the speed in that I I understand there's momentum and you want to, you want to hold on to that. I I didn't like the RFQ. I I didn't like the way it was presented. And so I I, it makes me curious what kind of developers we and we drew in with that with that RFQ. And especially since we hadn't done any outreach prior to the RFQ. You know, so I feel, and I, you know, again, our general plan hasn't been updated since ninety-seven. So we don't have a roadmap that is recent to do this. I like what you're saying, though, in terms of really looking at our city as a as a whole and making sure that whatever development we do fits in really well with the city. I feel like it's so important that whatever we do out there, whether it's a lot or a little, that it's really meaningful for the residents of Delray Oaks. And and so that's really important to me. So this economic analysis, I'm really interested in. And so I I don't feel like we should rush through that. I want to make sure that we we take our time. I'm not a developer. I want to make sure that we, we take our time. Um, I'm not a developer. I've never developed anything. And so it's going to take a while for me to, to understand the process. And so I would hope that, um, just because we have two developers waiting in the wings, that we, we can really be thoughtful with this process as we go forward. Um, because we need to get our residents on board. I want everyone happy about what we're doing. I know not everyone's going to be happy, but I want them to be informed and able to engage. And I feel like I need that process as well. So, um, so I'm really excited to sort of see this, the tasks that you've laid out. I, I, it makes sense. It's approachable. It's good. And, um, and so I'm, I'm interested to see how it goes forward. But again, I'm just letting you know that, um, I'm very interested in the economic analysis and the outreach to the, to the public. And, um, and again, letting those developers know if they need to wait, then they'll, they'll have to wait for us. So I guess that's what I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Um, I have a couple of questions. What is our current, um, inclusionary figure? Is it 15% or 20% for affordable housing? Jeff, do you know?
In the Ford or former Ford or area, it's 20%.
It is 20%.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Right.
And we, as part of the program for the housing element that the city council adopted, uh, for their current housing element, there is also a, a program to adopt new inclusionary housing ordinance. So that, for that can be identified and tweaked as we go through that process.
Okay. Um, and what is the cost of what you're proposing?
So this would be, uh, a budget shared with, uh, myself or EPS, I should say, and Denise Duffy and Associates. And we're looking at something right around 17K.
Okay. Um, RFQ. So I too, um, I, I have a couple of things going on in my head that concern me about this. One is, um, I want to hold on to as much of our property as possible. And so I would like to see options that provide resilience for us in the short term and, um, opportunities for future generations. So for example, I would love to see, um, part of the land used as, I don't know, a solar farm. Uh, something like that, that brings in some cash to the city, but, uh, would be available for a generation in 25, 30 years to be able to do what they want with that parcel. Um, it, so that is, that is, I just think it's way more valuable for us to own it. And I think net right now to sell it is to the advantage of the developers, not to us. Once that road goes in, our property is going to be more valuable. Um, and I too, uh, don't really respond much to being pushed, especially by developers when we haven't done our process yet. Um, so yeah, those are my two things. Why sell it all now? And I'd like to see options for subdivision that we do beforehand that, um, keep the control of some of it in our hands. Um, so those are, but I do like, this is the first time I have seen a very methodical process of what to do. And I too really appreciate that. Um, so, oh, and there, and there, there's other little things, um, like I would love to see a, an electrification ordinance kicked in. I would like to see some other climate change, um, ordinances, uh, built in as well. And I'd like those done before, um, a developer can, um, you know, choose whether that i- is the right fit for them. But I think it's an important fit for us.
That's, that's great input, uh, Mayor Kerr. Thank you. Um, I would, um, mention that one of the two developers is made a big point out of the, um, electrification issue and, and they, that, that particular entity is 100% committed to fully electric, uh, community. So, uh, I think there's, uh, some, some good things to look forward to here. And this is excellent input right at the front end. So thank you.
You're welcome. But I would like the city to protect ourselves rather than rely on a developer to do that for us. So, um, so I'm going to go out to the public. So I see Louise.
Good evening. I, I really, whoop, okay. I really enjoyed the presentation and I think it's a great, uh, roadmap. I like the economic development portion analysis is very important, uh, for the short term as well as the long term. Uh, one thing that geographically or geologically, however you want to look at it, the city is by nature, a divided city. Uh, we have the north side of 218 and the south side of eight, 218, which divides the city, which, excuse me, is a, a barrier that needs to be overcome. Probably partially through the tunnel, uh, for the Fort Tag, but not completely. And then we have us, the 150 condominium units that are around the corner and up the hill and tucked away. And everybody forgets we're here. Um, somehow, uh, we need to be brought together as a city. And then we're going to add a fourth geographically separate area, uh, off of, uh, South Boundary Road. Um, a, a downtown is what Delray Oaks needs. Um, whether that's a reutilization or repurposing of the current industrial area off of, um, can, uh, Callio Del Oaks and, and Delray Gardens Drive to the northwest of the existing Stone Creek Shopping Center or something in, in, uh, in the Ford Orde property. Um, but a downtown that would attract all of us together and, and have us work as a community would be very, very important. And like I said, uh, I really appreciate your efforts. And I think that we have a good roadmap and I look forward to future presentations and seeing where we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Um, Gary.
Yeah. Hello, uh, Gary Krueger, uh, the speak window. And it's nice to see a process as was mentioned by several council, uh, members. Uh, it would have been nice to have had some of this before the RFQ. We've been, uh, it's a dead horse, but we've been, you know, uh, filming for public input for a long time now. And maybe eventually it's going to happen. I guess better late than never. Uh, just one quick thought, the, the comment was made in there somewhere about the, uh, constraints haven't really changed much. And that surprised me a little bit because it seems to me like right now there's a lot changing, the state's changing laws. Constantly I looked at that, the RFQ, it looked pretty unimaginative, pretty cookie cutter. Yeah. We won't, you know, everything in the kitchen thing. Uh, there wasn't any creative thought given to it. It didn't seem, um, but we're going to be driven by the state. I mean, the state is, is, is pushing, uh, development away from single family residential detached development. I mean, that's, that's, they haven't forbid it outright, but that's where they're headed. Uh, there's density bonuses, you know, Monterey just recently, uh, land down Delmonte and Figaro to go up, I think four stories, three stories or four stories, because they realize there's, that's where the states thrive them. Uh, the groundwater sustainability, uh, no, we have water rights, uh, but that's, uh, that's something that needs to be looked at. Um, so there's, um, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to look at that are, that aren't the same thing, maybe even just a couple of years ago. So I, uh, I hope we, we, we take a look at all of that. And I am happy eventually that the, uh, we will get a voice for the residents, the, the strategic planning session. That's good input. That's not, that is not citizen input. Until during the week, during the day, and very few citizens can take off and participate in that. So, um, anyway, uh, look forward to the process. It is good to see something that's a little more, um, laid out and looking forward to, uh, seeing where this takes us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Dennis. You're, you're muted, Dennis.
Thank you. I, again, I just wanted to say hi to David. It's good to see you. And, uh, I know you were very instrumental in helping us with the failed, uh, other development. That wasn't your fault. Uh, we, but I think, uh, your expertise is extremely important. Um, this process that you've laid out, I think is very similar to the one that we went through back in the, the early 2000s with, uh, federal development. And, uh, it, I did, did take a quick look at these two, um, developers that you mentioned here, and, uh, they look very promising. Um, I, if I understand McKiller, Greg McGowan, they're located down in San Diego area. Is that correct, David? Yeah. Okay. And, um, they, they look like they're very well qualified to come in and, and critical thing that is, is, uh, I know you'll take into consideration is their financial background, you know, do, do they have the actual financial uh, backing so that they can carry through on any project that they commit to? Thank you very much. I'm glad to see you, David, and I know you'll do well with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Our public comment. Uh, uh, I see Nikki and then I go next. Nikki, please. You're, you're muted. Nikki, I cannot hear you.
How's that?
There you are. There you are.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that, Merica and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a very quick question. Um, and that rely or sort of reflects the sequencing of the actual development moving forward. What sorts of critical infrastructure free features are going to be a prerequisite to developing these four order lands? What sorts of things are the development potentials contingent on in terms of providing traffic, water, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Um, I saw, did I see a bill? Bill? Go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, I, I hear what Kim and Mayor Kerr are, excuse me, Councilmember Shirley. And, um, Mayor Kerr talking about this seems like it's kind of picking up a little steam that might be a little too early in the process. Um, I'm no developer. I'm no planner. I used to be a sewer plant mechanic and I'm a guy that works at a school right now, but I spent less than 30 minutes today on a computer, um, Googling what trends for 2021, 2022 for urban development were. And cookie cutter houses are not on that list. Now, I know we have an inclusionary housing component that we have to deal with. Most of it dealt with walking communities, communities that are just kind of their own little group. They do their thing and they have a mix of small retail, housing and other items that, and, uh, services. Um, I saw that kind of a model. Um, I don't like the idea of handing the whole mess over to a developer. They wouldn't do it if they weren't going to make a ton of money off the deal. Not that they're evil people. That's what they do. They're developers. That's what they exist to do. Um, however, I think the city could do a little bit of its own homework and education of the council and the citizenry of what really going forward into the mid 2000 or 2020s, uh, and even into the 2030s of what we really should be looking at doing with this 200 and some odd acres up in Fort Orde. I know there's some restrictions on how much can be commercial and how much can be this and that. Um, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it just seems like these developers have come in, they've got a plan in their head. They've already done the economic numbers. They've already looked at it and said, yeah, we can do this, this and this. And have, and, and make a profit on this. And I, I haven't read the RFQ. I intend to do that very soon. Um, it just seems like we need to maybe slow down a little bit and get a little more community input long before we select a developer. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments? I'm, uh, Mr. Clark.
Since this is a, a back and forth thing, because we had a presentation, I think you're safe to confirm. Um, what I believe I understand is we've been looking at this property since 1997. We have had developers come in and give presentations to us. We have had planning commission meetings. We have sat city council meetings. We have had research done by Denise Duffy. There has been nothing, nothing even remotely fast tracked about this at all. But feel free to check about the 1997, but I know it goes way back, which is 24 years now. Anyway, just my thought hasn't been fast tracked by any means. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other further public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, so there's no vote on this. Pat?
Yes, I would like to confirm, uh, my approval of what Louise said about our divided city. We have become so divided that we definitely need something to bring us all back together as to a friendly, happy community. And including all parts of the, the Oaks, the north side, the south side. And I believe a downtown area would help to accomplish that with the work of the residents. And, uh, so I, I just wanted to confirm my liking of what she had to say. And I would also like to thank both Denise and David for being here tonight and giving us lots of good information. Thank you so much.
All right. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the work that David's doing. Um, I mean, I, I think that there's, there's in that division of the city, there's this general sentiment, uh, suspicion, I guess, of developers. And that's really, I would say that's just because not everybody has worked with them. Um, and I think that what's, what's going to be important to this process, this growth for all of us is understanding that it, the developers, the reason they're going to make a profit and the reason that they, that they're going to, is, is they're taking the risk. They, they're the ones who are basically funding the, the, all of that research, all of that outreach, all of those charrettes, all of those, those, those concepts. And they, they know because the, the, the community all has the, has the final say in this process that we're going through, that they have to meet, um, the city's needs. They have to basically convince the city. So the, there is, there is no way for a developer to come in here and shove something down our throat. That, and, and that, I, I hear, when I hear comments like, we've got to slow down, we've got to slow down, we can't, we've got, we've got to watch what we're doing with developers. I, my, my sense is, is that that's a concern that the developers are going to somehow or another be able to come in and just and dictate what we, the city are going to put in. And it's, it's not that way at all. It's, it's actually, it's quite, it's a master and servant relationship in that the, the community actually has the, uh, has the, the final say. And the developer has to basically fit, fit into that box. Now they are spending their money, uh, to, to do that. It, if we, the community wanted to basically, you know, on our own create, uh, the, a vision for, for that land, that comes with all of that risk and all of that expense and all of that investment on our side. And we don't have that money. So it is, it, you know, we're, we're kind of caught in the middle and that land is, we're going to hear later on tonight, does not come for free. It comes with a carrying cost. And, and we'll start to realize that here soon because we've come out from underneath the, you know, the hope that we were going to go down an HCP route and we're, we're on an HMP route. And that, that HMP is going to have a cost. And so this land will, will eventually begin to hit our bottom line ju- just in carrying costs without it doing absolutely nothing and with us doing, doing anything. So at some point we're going to have to come to an agreement that we've got to let someone come in because we can't afford to, to do it ourselves, show us what can be done with that land. And that is, that, that, that really is a partnership. That's what a developer, bringing a developer in. And, and I have, I am a developer and I've done a lot of it. I've done. And I have, I am a developer, and I've done a lot of it. I've done renewable energy development. And on that, I wanted to touch on the, that, the concept that the mayor had talked about in preserving basically the land with some form of a renewable energy project for future generations. I'll say that that made sense, sense, literally dollars and cents of, back in 2009. And that was, that was my proposition to a lot of distressed land, holders of distressed land out in the Central Valley. And in that work, the, back then, solar in 2009, you could, you could sell it wholesale for $200 a megawatt hour. That price now is less than $20 a megawatt hour. So it's a 10x difference in reduction in what someone will pay you to sell that, that power. And for us, it would be to Tom. And Tom is not going to buy, is not going to buy power from us at that $200 megawatt hour. He's going to pay, you know, market price.
John, can you think of Monterey Bay Community Power, which is now...
It's actually now, it's, you know...
Community Choice.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. And I am actively selling projects or trying to sell projects to them. So they don't do anything for free, and they don't do anything, they don't, they don't, they rarely will pay a premium. So what I'm, I guess the point I'm trying to say is that a project that we would do out there, a renewable energy project, has to be commercially viable. And, and part of the issue now is that, that there, you know, the retail or the wholesale price is 10x what, 10x less than what it was. Hardware costs are not 10x what they were. So somewhere in that whole project economics, there's got to be a given. It's generally in the land cost. And right now, anything close to the coast is, you know, or any place, anywhere where there's, you know, there's, it makes higher, the higher and best use of that land is in residential, or you're competing against residential, renewable energy loses on that. So renewable energy generation would not necessarily be, I think, our saving grace there. There is, there is definitely an opportunity in storage, and the footprint is much smaller. But it has to be, generally, it has to be in industrial land already, industrially zoned land. Now, that's something that we could definitely be building in to our zoning when we're thinking about out there, and we're doing an industrial zone. You know, let's put that next to a substation, or let's have, let's have the developer basically build a substation close to it so that when there's industrial zone, and let's keep that for our, you know, for ourself, you know, as, for the city. I think that we can be very, very strategic in that. But the, holding it, you know, putting it under glass and preserving it into the future, you know, that's, that's kind of gone for us here. It can still be done out in like places like Imperial County and Nevada and Arizona. It's still being, that's still being marketed. But where the land's highest and best value is in some sort of commercial, commercialization, you know, retail and, or, or commercial or residential, it's impossible. It's just absolutely impossible to be able to do a renewable energy project. And I wish we could, because I looked at it 10 years ago and tried to, tried to convince Dan Dawson to do something when the prices were at $200 a megawatt hour. And we didn't, we didn't work, we didn't move on it then. So those are my comments. But I do, I do understand what you want to do. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to do it. It's just a different, it's a different animal, you know, than it was back then. So.
Okay, I agree. Kim, Shirley, Ms. Shirley?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify with Councilman Gagliotti, and just, so I make sure I understand. So this $17,000, it's being proposed by David Zender and Denise as far as doing this outreach. You're saying that that should be taken on by the developer?
No, not at all. No, no, no. Go ahead. Sorry, I'll respond back, but no, I'm not.
Well, so I, yeah, so I want to make sure that we are going forward with the process. Because I, you know, again, it just seems like if we have a developer who's there doing that process with us, I mean, it seems like they would just steer us into, you know, they would give us all the ideas that would benefit them. And so I feel like that needs to be divorced from the developer. We need to be able to do our own visioning with, with input from people we trust who don't have an economic interest in this, so that we can understand what's going to work best for our city. If the developer wants to do more outreach on their dime, once we choose who that is, that's fine. But I just feel like upfront, I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make it the best choice for us. So I guess I wanted some clarification because you talked about the developer having the cost for charrettes and visioning, and I want to make sure we do that ourselves, separate from them.
So if I may, that's, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. That, those kind of things cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, all of that planning, all the, like, the, those presentations. And so, I mean, I totally, I totally understand your concern. But I, I want, I want you to basically kind of go through this process with, all of it, you and I together, to go through this process and maybe temper some of your concern with, you know, with the, I guess, the developers, you know? I mean, developer is such a bad term. And we're not going, this process actually is not going to let another federal in, you know? We, we know, and plus, we've got more smarts now than we did in the past. And the, I, I agree that there should be some apprehension and some suspicion, but, but just because they are a developer, doesn't mean that they're, you know, they're going to come in and try to hoodwink us and pull one, pull one over on us. And the thing is, is that is it for us to basically be able to come up with a product that they can build and that we agree with, that process is going to take literally hundreds of thousands of dollars? Look how much Fort Tag took, you know? I mean, that took almost, it was a million dollars, I think, in some of, in some of that design of that. Now, that was funded, you know? And there's lots of money out there for transportation. There's not a lot of money out there for cities to, you know, repurpose or have vision for their land. There's not, there's not grant money out there for that. So, so we, we do have to, when it gets, when it gets to the point where we're actually doing serious planning and, and really, really reaching out to the public and getting all that, that's, that's a very, very expensive proposition, and someone else basically has to pay for that. But this, but this initial upfront, we can pay for, you know? I think 17K is a bargain, you know?
It does sound like a bargain, but I do want to look at, you know, maybe we don't spend $100,000 on this. Or maybe we find, maybe there is a grant out there that we can use for, for this purpose. And we've talked to someone who can do that. So I just want us to remain open to that idea, that there's other things out there, too.
I agree.
For possibilities.
Totally, and I'm with you on it. I'm totally with you.
Thanks. Yep.
So Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, I really don't have more to add. I mean, this is a great dialogue. And I really appreciate Councilmember Gagliotti's comments. I mean, great insight and perspective. I mean, he has a lot of experience with it. And I just, to go back to what I said before, I feel comfortable with this process that we have in terms of getting public input upfront. And then not only just doing that, but going back and verifying that, hey, that's in fact what we want before we even move out. And so I feel confident in that process as we move forward.
Okay. There was, there are a couple of things that were triggered for me as people were talking. I would be fine with storage. I would be fine with the microgrid. What I want is, I want all of the options shown for not only the council. I disagree that we have a lot of smarts. I mean, no one ever talks about what happened with the federal LLC debt. What did the city do to get us in this, in this situation? I don't, I'm not confident that we can't, or that we won't get into another situation like that. So I want to make, I want to make sure everything is buttoned down. I want to make sure every voice is heard, and every potential calamity is addressed from all sides. We cannot afford another costly mistake with our last piece of land that will severely impact our city, positive and negative. So, so tied to that, I'd like to know how the road fits into this? And when a traffic study is done? Yeah, and Nikki mentioned the traffic and the water. I think we know the water, or at least the amount that we have, or that is contracted. But yeah, those are my thoughts. I, I just want to be presented any and all options. We're coming, we're slowly coming out of a pandemic. And the city is undergoing more transition. I am concerned about how fast this moves. We're in the middle of a city, city manager hiring process. So those are my concerns. We have, we, there's a lot of stuff in the air. And, and I just want to make sure that we're going forward cautiously. So Jeff, what would you?
So Mayor, this was just informational. What we'll do is we will present staff reports for the scope of work and the cost proposal for the economic study at the April meeting. Additionally, we will present that five-step plan and a summary of it to see how that ties in and if there's any adjustments or any direction that council would give staff with that five-step plan. It's presented to you now, so you have a month to review that and go over it and come up with your input when we come back for action items on both of those separately next month, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, David and Denise, but I don't think we're quite through with you, right? The next item?
I think you're done with me, but I know Denise has a long night.
All right. Well, thank you, David.
Thank you.
So let's move on to item 6C, consider general plan annual progress report with Denise Duffy. Do I turn it over to Jeff or to, straight to Denise?
Mayor, if I just may introduce it, and then I'll turn it over to Denise. This staff report is an action item. It is an action item regarding the annual progress report, the APR of our general plan. It is not a broader discussion of the whole general plan. What it is, it's a reporting requirement that we have to do yearly based upon the amount of progress we've made on our general plan. We very recently submit one, I believe it was last June or July. Since that time, with COVID and all the other transitions, we have really not made much progress on the general plan, if any. So what is presented, it is just a brief outline of the report. There's no specific state mandated format. So we created the format, Denise Duffy and associates created the format. And included in that is the, the charts that you see were from the previous update that we did extensive community outreach in, again, this is just approval. It's been through the planning commission. They approved it to come to council for further approval and submitting it to the state. I'll turn it over to Denise, and she can get into greater detail about the reporting requirements and format and all of that. Denise?
Thank you. And I think I'll share in a minute. Denise Duffy, your planning consultant, and this may be a little bit of deja vu for some of you because we did go through this once before. And those of you that were on the planning commission, then in 2017, we did five or six different planning commission sessions on the general plan. A key element here is, yes, we need to have a submittal of what progress has been made in implementing your general plan in terms of housing and in terms of policy programs. And we need to submit that annually. There's no formatted for it, no specific format for it. But specifically, I think what Councilwoman, Councilwoman Shirley said earlier is that we have, we have a general plan that's from the 1980s, 1998. We are not here to identify what needs to be updated in the general plan. The process is what have we done to implement these specific existing programs and policies in the general plan since last year, since, and it's even further than that, since last time we submitted, which is July 2020. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I think first, it's really helpful, and I'll try and go through that quickly, given the time. I think it's helpful to understand what's in your packet. What's in your packet tonight is a staff report identifying what, you know, what's the process? What needs to be done, which we just outlined, and I'll outline again. There's also a resolution that identifies if you choose to move forward tonight. This is the same resolution, similar resolution you did last year about, you know, you're willing to bring this forward to HCD as your annual reporting. And then there is the annual report. That's the attachment attached to the annual report. There's some identification within the annual report is, here's what we talked about. Here's what we thought of this year in the planning commission. Here are the general plan policies that have already been identified that need to be updated. And we understand that. Here's our outdated policies. We've said that before. It's with current. And here's what the planning commission did. They made some changes to, minor changes to, and they had discussion regarding the matrices of policies. And so it's all of your policies from your general plan. And in our staff report, it's also what the planning commission commented on in all of those policies. And what's particular, I think it's important to state what they said. They said, you know, in a nutshell, it's like, wow, one of these columns says that we're implementing this regularly, and I'm not so sure. We need to say that very, and we need to be really careful about exactly what we're saying. So I'd like a chance to review this. So we changed the language on that. It's an ongoing policy. We're not putting statements on who's doing what. And that was one of the comments. And then the planning commission said, I believe, as a group, I think it's a good opportunity, we'd like the opportunity to really look at this when we go through a general plan update, which is, again, very, very important thing to do. And outside the context of this process right now is something that I, you know, would be really willing to help on and be exciting to do for the city. And then the other thing, the comments that were made were, don't forget, you know, we want to make sure we consider climate action, other things that should be included in the general plan. So we added that language very, very quickly. And then there's a couple of outdated policies. Why are you discussing Fort Ord? So we explained, well, Fort Ord is in the existing general plan, so that's what the policy states. But we, in terms of how we say we're implementing or have done something, we edited that out. We've struck, and so you can see in the five or six changes that have been made, how that was corrected. So that's what's in your staff report and what's in your packet. And again, the action for tonight, if you choose to, would be to open the public hearing, ask us any questions about this, and then make a judgment as to whether you want to move this forward to the OPR and HCD, Office of Planning Research and Housing Community Development. I'm going to try and make sure my screen, and I'm going to, if I could, Randy, request to share my screen.
You should be good.
I don't know why. It's just going to something else now. Oh, sorry. Give me a minute. Because I minimized, excuse me. There we go. So share screen.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start this. And our agenda tonight is look at the annual general plan, available for any questions, and consider your actions. We are here to provide the progress of what, what we've done as a city to actually make progress toward implementing policies, particularly focused on really trying to meet regional housing share. Report on the progress of general plan policies just from last year. And this is a requirement, the planning commission is required to make a recommendation to the city council and as to whether or not they agree to move this project, this, sorry, this report forward, which they did. So we're, previous reporting was conducted in 2020, submitted in July, a very comprehensive review. It's progress made on implementing policies. I think we've seen this slide before, but it's important to remember it's a 1980s real plan. That was when the last general plan of the city at that time of that size was adopted, when all the policies were implemented, I'm sorry, were developed. There's an update in 1997 and 98, and that was the, when former Fort Ord, and when four was alive, the four reuse plan was adopted, we did the general plan update just to incorporate those policies from the former Ford of property. Now that four is gone, we have and have since then had all of those policies, and they're a part of our general plan. Then most recently, we have the general plan update of the housing element option. And that was adopted in 2019 and currently being updated now in 2021. So there's not been much progress made on the housing element or any of those. Um, so there's not been much progress made on the housing element or any of those new changes to the general plan. Since the last year, there's been no general plan uh updates. There's been no housing element, um ordinances, updates, the general uh housing element. And um, since the comprehensive conducted review from last year, there's been no um also um, you know, general plan amendments or amendments to any land use plans. So um this report format can vary. Uh, it's fairly interesting when you talk to HCD and OPR. Uh, we did a, I think the city should commend itself. They did a very good job of even during COVID. You know, developing the um this report, submitting the report and going out and doing outreach to the citizens through planning commission and and city council hearings. Um, due to COVID nineteen, there are many oh, you know, the cities and jurisdictions that did not even report on progress on their general plan. So that's something that could be, should be commended. I think it's also important to note that the this comprehensive understanding of each of your policies, each time you go through this is really important and valuable for the citizens. It's valuable for the city council and the planning commission and it'll be really helpful um as we move forward in the future. And I want to your visions and your goals and objectives is to update the general plan. Uh, the city's requirement is to submit it by April of every year, previous calendar year. Uh, the housing element is an April first hard deadline. Uh, housing element progress report, it's um the general plan policy progress report is April first deadline, but it is not, uh, there's no penalty and there's no real requirement that it has to be in by that date. Housing element is really a numerical Excel spreadsheet with about ten different, fifteen different elements of it's really meant for larger cities with, it has a lot more activity. We have a very small city, a very small activity. So this is, you, you, it outlines what is your regional housing needs assessment? How many, how the new housing units have you built in the last year? Usually it's zero for Delbury Oaks. In this case, there was one ADU that was developed in the city during the past year and um and and, you know, we're able to report that. Um, since the city is so limited in geographic area and water and development constraints, there's very little to be able to report on housing element progress on an annual basis. Uh, we do report on, here are existing policies and here's the status again, since there hasn't been very much time, there's uh, we're really working toward doing the ADU ordinance and that's what we're working on and the general plan um housing element update. So at this point, um, the planning commission had a hearing. They updated the chart slightly uh through our work and they voted to approve the APR. Are your next steps are, um, we're open to any questions? Open to public comment and then make a decision whether to choose to follow the planning commission recommendation and approve this to go send to HCD, OPR or continue the hearing or whatever other options that you want. And that closes my presentation.
Great. Thank you, Denise. So uh, let's go to the council. Ms. Lynn Tell.
Yeah, I just have one question for a definition of an item in the attachment B, page four. It says, "Super trucks shall not be allowed off of state highways within the city limits." I'd like to know what a super truck is. Do you have any idea, Denise?
Well, it was, the policy was made in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, I think it's a big truck. Um, I think it related to a noise element at that time. Um, and there is no, no real. I can look up the definition for you back then, but I don't, I think it just refers to large noise-making vehicles, trucks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, um, I I can give some insight. The, the super trucks are lowboy trucks and we use them for bringing in like turbine blades or big giants um switch stations and things like that. Um, and they, they, they have, they're super heavy loaded uh and two eighteen, I don't think is load capacity for that. Um, so that's uh, I think that's probably why that's in there. Uh, the, the question that I had um is on the consistency of the general plan with the, the base reuse plan with, with four gone. Does that give us some license within the general plan to go back and rewrite things that maybe we want differently? Or or do we still have to maintain that consistency?
I, you know, that's a really good question. You're, you have the right to update and revise your journal plan, you know, four times a year. I don't know if there's anything that's been signed through your agreements with the former fora with the handover property or um dollars and HMP and all that process at the future. Um, and that would be something that we'd have to check in with the city attorney and Erin may have some um input on that, but we'd have to get back to on that. It doesn't impact what's happening today. It's about a particular policy question. Um, and I think that's really an important question as everything is processed moving forward on property development in Ford or former Ford.
All right. Um, and then there was a more of a a process question for tonight. Do we have to open a public hearing? Um, and then uh, and then make, make a judgment? Or do we just keep everything the way it is and and then just make a judgment?
Do the mayor, I like an answer. I, I, I think that it's been uh Alex, um, or your city attorney may want to comment on that. I think how it's been um noticed is the important element.
Yeah, I would concur. So Councilmember Gagliotti, I, if I understand your question, is the timing of public comment tonight on this item, is that?
No, 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 a hearing. Uh, and the reason I'm, I'm asking this is that we just had to do this at MST and I didn't even know it was a process. But but in the mi- in the regular board meeting, we had an action that required a public hearing. So we had to just say the term, we had to use some special term and that made that, that, that sanctions as a public hearing. And then we could make, we could, we could take the action and then close the public hearing and then go back to this, the, the meeting. Are we in that same situation tonight?
You know, to, to be honest with you, I'm not sure Denise, if, if you could speak to the noticing there. I mean, generally, public hearing is to open it up and have an action item and have public comment.
Yeah, okay.
That, you know, so, so I think it, it may, it may come down to semantics at this point, but
Exactly. Okay. It, it's a nit, but, but when, when, but there, there was, there, there was a, um Denise said in her opening presentation that it was that we had, we had to, it has to be part of a public hearing and and I, we just went, I just went through something I got on a separate board. It's a nit.
I, I think the clarification there, Councilman Gagliotti, is I was referencing the requirement at the planning commission. And that, and that what happened there and what was completed there and that action is done.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't need, it doesn't need to be a public hearing at the council level.
Right, perfect.
No, I'm asking actually.
Oh, oh. I was hope.
The, I, you know, I would refer to Alex, but I think it was noticed not as a public hearing, but as an action item and that the hope is that you'd open up to public comments.
We will, okay.
I, I think that's right. And we have a recommendation from planning commission. Is that right after that notice hearing? Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, John. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt. Did you have any?
No, 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 I'm, I'm glad we kind of fleshed it all out. I mean, it, it, in my mind, it's a nit, but I know that it was one, it was something that we actually made a big deal about at MST. So I thought maybe we had to do the same here. So.
It, it is a big deal. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, I think this absolutely meets the requirement, particularly as it relates to our primary purpose, which is the progress that we're making on our, on our arena numbers. And, you know, one of the things that Denise pointed out, I mean, I know the general plan gets beat up a lot because it's outdated and everything, but she mentioned the five or six planning commission meetings that we sat through. I think uh Councilmember Gagliotti was our chair at the time, and those were some long lonely nights where we went and worked through that general plan. And really, there was, I, I don't think there was any public that showed up for that meeting. And I think we did some pretty good work during that time back in uh, in twenty seventeen. So though it's outdated, um, we did a lot of work on that back during that time.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Thank you. Um, Denise, I want to thank you so much for your edits that you made to everything since the planning commission. I was really pleased. So um, I just want to thank you for that. Um, I did have a question about our safety element and how come that isn't included in your analysis? It looked like you looked at all the different elements, but the safety element isn't, isn't reviewed.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we have been doing that for each of these journal plan APRs and there's never been a comment on it. So we can add it to the next one. Um, I don't necessarily think it's going to make a change since nothing's been done on any of the safety element. Elements or policies, but thank you for letting us know.
Okay, yeah. Cause again, and I, you know, like your mention of climate, um, climate action, because I know we need to have that within the safety element. So at some point when we do update the general plan, I'd like to see that in there.
I'm keeping a list, if I can say, I'm keeping a list of every hearing we have. And um, I look forward to talking to everybody about, you know, how that can move forward in some way. It, um, I didn't mean to drop, um, I thought you were finished, sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
And I wanted to echo one thing that I thought was really interesting in all these many, many meetings is that some of the core values that we hear all the time um come through really well in the existing general plan. So we shouldn't, you know, um, be feeling too bad. And I think it's also really important, just from a legal standpoint, that it's reviewed all the time and that these core values and the cons, the, the elements that are there are really valid up to this date. And I think that's important to state for the record.
No, I, I would agree with you. And um, and I was happy with Councilman Gagliotti's question in terms of the base reuse plan and how that relates to our general plan and any changes. So I was interested in that. Um, my other comments are just little edits. So do you mind going through them? They're just, they're little. Um, or should I just? I, I don't know.
Just.
Sure. There you go.
I'm happy to go through. I'm happy to have, uh, if they're minor edits that are non-consequential, um. We could, you can send them to me and we can have a side conversation or you can do it now, whatever the council.
Yeah, I, I could just do it now real quick. On page two. You mentioned.
Are you on the staff report or the?
I'm on the APR.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. On page two, under status, you have the council meeting on March eighteenth. It should be the twenty-third.
Thank you. Thank you.
Huh? And then on the, the, the next page after that, you, you, you mentioned twice in that first paragraph that the um APR was submitted April first, twenty twenty, but I, I think you were saying that we got it in, in July.
I'm uh, I'm still, I'm trying to find page two. Thank you. I'll, I got those.
Okay.
And if I don't get it, I'll be contacting you.
Okay, okay. Yeah. And then again, the top of page three, I think the April first needs to be changed to July. And, and then on the grid, on page eight. Um, at the top of page eight, C slash OS dash three. Um, it, it stated that the city is committed to preserving wildlife habitat and wildlife corridors by preserving large areas of space and maintaining natural vegetation at the frog pond. It makes it sound like we maintain the frog ponds, but that's under the jurisdiction of the Park District. So I don't know if we want to alter that statement. I agree with that statement. Uh, but it, it makes it sound like we take care of the frog pond, which we don't.
Yeah, I think it's meant to say with the comma that the district maintains the vegetation. Um, I'm not sure I'm on mute, sorry.
Yeah, cause you, you say that.
I'll, I'll fix that.
You say that in the second one in.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it consistent. Pardon me, sorry. Got it. Let's look at the wrong one.
That's okay. That's okay. And then the next one, we, you mentioned that there's not much riparian vegetation in the city and it, we have a whole creek that runs through our city. So it seems as though with, with wetland habitats on both ends. It, it just seems like maybe that's a statement that isn't appropriate.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great.
For your comments.
Um, actually, on that page, I just had one thing that came up and I was just questioning it. C slash, is it zero S dot five C?
Open space, O, OS.
OS, excuse me. Um, the annex land from former Fordord includes a conservation area which the city is working with the Monterey Regional Park District on? Is that the parks or is that CMPS? There's two down.
Um, it's a CNPS.
Okay. So that can change?
Yes.
And that's, that's all I had. Um, last year, when this came before, I had all kinds of, of questions and comments and um, I'm glad to see this back this year. Um, is there, is there a way that we can use this to look forward for the next year? So, you know, I mean, how do other cities use this data? It would be nice to be able to have some, I don't know, planning.
We could, um, I, I know the city does a, a annual vision. Um, although we're not involved with that and hear about it afterwards, um, we can do something similar to a workshop. Um, where we bring this forward and have some sort of interactive discussion regarding it. Um, and it's an iterative, so this living, breathing document comes forward again in an iterative process. And then we memorialize the comments regarding not the progress made, but what we'd like to see change, what the city council and the directions from planning commission as a workshop would really like to see change. And that's essentially what you do when you start a general plan uh update. So this would be, that's why I say I love this because it really is inter- not just interactive, but it's also very helpful for your next step. That would be the next step.
Okay. So we'll talk to Jeff about that. But other than that, thank you very much for getting us back on time.
Thank you.
Even though it, it doesn't seem like a long time be- between the last one, but um, I uh I, my notes just also mentioned the public hearing, so I think we're good. So let's go out to the public. Anybody in the public have any comments on the um general plan annual progress report? Any, I see, okay. Uh, Dr. Waltz.
So thi- this is, I apologize, this is a little bit of a rabbit hole, but uh Councilmember Gaglavi made me think about this. Um, yes, four is gone, but uh the ci- the city in general should be very attentive to the deed restrictions that follow upon the properties that are handed over by the city. I know as part of the Sierra Club, there was a settlement agreement. And one of the provisions in the deeds should be a, a requirement for a consistency determination. So fora is gone and, you know, the king is dead and yet um hail the king. Uh, so i- it's worth paying attention to the deed restrictions. I know that's a little bit of a rabbit hole, but um worth thinking about in the big picture. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Jim Clark.
Well, I just thought it was so nice of uh Ms. Duffy to accommodate my question. In her very first slide, it said that we got the property and started thinking about it in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, a nice quick way to validate that. And then also, um, the other thing, Mayor, you mentioned you hadn't heard or weren't aware, aware why the um uh debt we got into was, well, that was the big financial crisis of two thousand eight, primarily caused by deregulation in the financial industry that permitted banks to hedge, engage in hedge fund training with derivatives. And so that's what uh stopped the developer that we originally had that brought that debt back up. And that's, that's been covered many times, but it's always good to review. So I thought as long as it was right there in front of us, it was good timing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll come back to the council. Any last questions, comments?
I want to thank Dr. Waltz for uh, for, for pointing out one of the details. Thank you.
It's, it's all good. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the general plan, uh, the annual general plan report or uh update report.
I second, but can I add a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Um, to include the edits that were discussed.
Um, absolutely. I agree. Uh, I accept a second or the friendly amendment.
Okay. Karen, can you take us through a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. It passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to the Habitat Management Plan Proposal by Denise Duffy and Associates. How about if I turn this over to city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, this next item is an action item. It is a proposal for a contract with Denise Duffy and Associates to provide biological consulting services for the Fordord Habitat Management Plan Compliance. Uh, the Habitat Management Plan, and I'll let Aaron Harawayne with Denise Duffy and Associates get into this a, a lot deeper. But the HMP requirement came along when the uh, proposed habitat conservation plan with multi-jurisdictional uh, authority with all the jurisdictions, uh, like the city receiving for our properties, uh, did not pass. That then fell towards each individual jurisdiction to comply with the requirements about habitat management. Uh, hence the HMP terminology. Along with that requirement to develop a habitat management plan, the uh, authority also provided funding to pay for the Habitat Management Plan or at least a, a certain amount of the Habitat Management Plan moving forward. Uh, this is a requirement uh, for us to have. Aaron Harawayne and I have uh, met several times on this particular uh, topic toward the areas that this covers on Fort Ord. Obtained uh, information as to uh, different types of properties and different regulations that we have to do with the Habitat Management Plan. And I uh, bring forth the staff report and their proposal to uh, provide uh, management of that plan for us. So I'll turn it over to Aaron, thank you for being here.
Great, thank you, Acting City Manager Jeff Hoyn and Madam Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. You're getting, what, triple dose of Denise Duffy and Associates tonight? Thank you, Denise, just FYI, oh, there you go. Um, so um, thanks for having us. And I, I, I was just really pleased to hear how um, the three presentations, though, complement each other so much this evening and how they are tied together. And so I look forward to, to getting into that with you this evening. Um, and most importantly, thanks for requesting this proposal from us. Um, the biological resources and habitat management requirements are very near and dear to my heart. I've been working on um, intimately with them for over 20 years now. And so it's a pleasure to, to bring that expertise to the city and help them through this, this process, which is required. Um, full disclosure, I replaced a couple of things on the slides that are included in your packet. I did update the city logo, because I felt bad the new one wasn't there. And I did replace the um, map on slide six. And I'll point out the difference when we get there. And I will also provide the final presentation PowerPoint to, to you all after, um, this evening, after I'm done. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. You know, after we get used to all this, we're going to be back in person. All right, how does it look? We're good, okay, thank you, Mayor. And Mary, since you gave me the thumbs up, can you see my cursor? When I do this, great, I'm also missing my dear laser pointer. Okay, this evening, I'm going to go over um, the regulatory background and, and why we're here tonight. Um, and where, where we are, why we are where we are today. Um, and the city's responsibilities, give you some examples of what these um, requirements under the HMP Habitat Management Plan might look like, and then give you an overview of our scope of work. I do want to say that Fordord is a complicated situation. There are um, deed restrictions, as Dr. Waltz mentioned. Um, the failed habitat conservation plan, which uh, Councilmember Gagliotti mentioned. And so there's, there's a lot of um, layers to this onion. And I tried to um, provide a comprehensive background and summary, but yet concise in your staff report. And also, um, you'll see my scope of work there as well. Okay, so I'm going to go through this slowly and carefully, because I'll go into acronym mode. All right, so a little bit about the 1997 Fordord Multi-Species Habitat Management Plan. Where it, where it originated was that when the Army, the US Army, decided to close the former Fordord, they had to do an, a number of um, regulatory actions to dispose and reuse this former military base. Disposal and reuse is just fancy talk for getting rid of their land and providing it to the local jurisdictions for, for transferring that land and, and reusing it. Um, that action is big, you know, we're talking about 28,000 acres and a lot of property and issues. Um, it was deemed a major federal action that could result in impacts to federally listed species. So that triggered the Federal Endangered Species Act. And the US Army was required to go through Section 7 consultation under the federal ESA. And what culminated at the end of that consultation process was the issuance by the US Fish and Wildlife Service of a biological opinion. And you'll hear me use um, the term BO, and that's what that is, it's not body odor, that was in 1993. And so when the Fish and Wildlife Service issued that BO, it required the Army to prepare and implement a habitat management plan. So the Army did that, and in 1997, it became an approved document between those two federal agencies, as you see in that third bullet, between the Army and Fish and Wildlife Service. And what's really important to note, it's a federal to federal agreement. It's not federal to state, it's not federal to the city, it's federal to federal, and that has a lot of implications. What's important about the Habitat Management Plan is it provided the mitigation for the Army to clean up its property, transfer it over, and any impacts on those listed species would be covered by this plan, by the Habitat Reserve System that was established through this, this plan. And so there were a number of signatories that signed on to the HMP. And they are required to fulfill these habitat management and borderland requirements. So again, full disclosure, the city of Delray Oaks is not one of them, because the signatories were very specifically identified to those being those that would be land managers. The city of Delray Oaks is not a land manager, quote unquote. It has some responsibilities and requirements, which we'll get into. But the city did not reserve, uh, receive any reserve parcels, habitat reserve parcels, or habitat corridor parcels, which really come with those land management um, activities, requirements. So remember how I said the federal to federal is important to understand? Because back in 97, when the um, when these parcels began to be transferred, this federal agreement provided the coverage under the Endangered Species Act for the federal government to impact these, let federal listed species. But once transferred to local jurisdictions, you have no take coverage. The city wouldn't have no take coverage for these listed species. So what happens there is that the local jurisdictions are required to get their own permits. And so what happened, that was the birth of the failed habitat conservation plan, which was led by the Fordord Reuse Authority for the last 23 years, which I have been involved with for the last 16 or 17. Um, it was pretty disheartening, and I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit about that. But, but what's happening now is what you're seeing before you, is that each of you are having to deal with your own habitat management requirements instead of following, falling under this big regional holistic umbrella plan, which um, was negotiated with the agencies and, in its final hour. So um, we can get to that over coffee sometime, but it's really important to understand. And I, I'll just give Mayor Kerr and Councilmember Gagliotti a big shout out for going through six months from, from January to June of last year to really intense habitat management meetings. And this is probably a refresher for you, but thank you so much for your input during that process. So we are here today just to implement the Habitat Management Plan itself, those requirements. This, this action, this activity is not giving you any permit. This is just to do the very basic habitat management requirements outlined in the Habitat Management Plan. This is not specific to any development, it doesn't provide any coverage. I just wanted to point that out from the beginning. All right, this is my watermelon map, map. I, it, I like it because it just really lays out what, what the habitat looks like and development parcels look like basewide. Um, just for, for orientation, this is Highway One, Fordord Dunes over here on the left, the main garrison over here on the, on the right, on the east side. And basically, it, it really shows the pink and development and the green habitat corridors and habitat reserve areas that I, I talked about. Um, regionally, what that looks like, again, that's 28,000 acres. You've got about 10,000 of the pink development parcels, 10,000 acres of those. And you've got a 18 plus thousand acres um, in habitat reserve. So as Dr. Waltz hit on, um, Delray Oaks received approximately 325 acres of Fordord lands under, um, when the, when the property was transferred over. Um, five of those parcels identified in our proposal are designated as borderland parcels and development with restriction parcels. Um, and they have different requirements that are outlined um, in the Habitat Management Plan. So the borderland parcels, and I do have this wonderful edited um, slide six map that I'll, I'll zoom into Delray Oaks in a moment. The borderland parcels, really the intent of those um, are to keep the, the property um, in the interim before development occurs. And in the long term, where to butts the Fed, the Fordor National Monument, make sure that any development in that parcel stays in that development and doesn't impact that habitat reserve area in the monument. So there's, there's an intention there. And then the Office Park, again, I use air quotes, Office, um, that's what the HMP calls it. And it's just the easy way um, to referring to these three parcels. Um, but there are three parcels south of South Boundary, and there are specific development restrictions that, that apply to those parcels, having to do with fuel breaks and drainage. Um, and so the city's requirements are outlined in Section 8 of the Quick Claim Deed for these parcels. And I can talk more about that a little bit later, if you, if you like. So here's the map I replaced, and the only thing I did to it, um, since seen in the packet, is we added this hatched area to really designate the five parcels that we're talking about. So this is E29A, the big um, parcel north of South Boundary Road, or South Boundary. Here's um, General Gym. Um, and then we have um, E29B1. And then we've got E31AB and C here down below, these are the Office Park Development with Restrictions, and these are the borderlands. And so you can see in the hatching that we have a, a number of, um, well, quite a few linear miles of, of borderlands for, for the city to maintain. So what do those borderline requirements look like? Um, again, the HMP is pretty vague. It, it requires that the jurisdictions come up with their own site-specific plans after, after transfer. Um, generally speaking, you're looking at firewise planning, erosion control, non-native species control, security and access controls, road and trail maintenance, signage preservation if required, um, annual reporting and coordination with the Bureau of Land Management, the Fordord Coordinated Resource Management Planning Team, um, the CRIMP and, and others. And another thing that Councilmember Gagliotti brought up was, was the cost of this. And there, um, there are a number of things that the developers will be required to comply with and also implement, and I can talk about that in a moment. So our scope of work includes um, just general project initiation, getting um, our, our legs on this and making sure we have all the deed information and agreement information so we can make sure everything's covered from the start. We have early coordination, stakeholder meetings, um, some public outreach associated with um, an opportunity for the, the um, um, public to participate. And basically preparing a borderline management, uh, borderlands management plan, a BMP. And that would cover all five parcels. And we would do a baseline inventory, identify goals and objectives, identify those management activities along the border, avoidance and minimization measures um, to avoid impacts, you know, to water quality, um, erosion, things like that. And of course, other resource, biological resources. It would establish that monitoring and reporting program that's required. And also identify the implementation plan, which is important in terms of really putting, um, establishing what the city's responsibilities are and what a developer coming in would need to comply with and would be responsible for. And that, of course, is um, intimately connected to a cost estimate for, for that implementation plan. And that is part of our, our process. And that could be in lieu fees, some sort of nexus program for a developer. You know, we, the doors open and we're gonna, we're gonna consider all those. So we'll have a draft available for public review and input. And ultimately, we'll go to the city council for, for approval. Okay. Questions?
Okay, um, let's start with Pat Lintel.
No questions, uh, but I would like to thank you for the excellent presentation, Erin, and being with us at this late hour. I appreciate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
No, but I echo what, but Pat just said, I mean, Erin, you worked magic. I mean, this is a really, this is just a rat's nest worth of federal kind of, you know, just a mess. And it's, it's totally clear and laid out, I've really, yeah, you did a great job.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, I just echo what John and Pat had to say. And, you know, one of the other things that Councilmember Gagliotti had mentioned is, the bottom line, um, this land's going to start costing us money. I mean, each year, we're looking at, at doing the, the same thing. So uh, that's just uh, one thing that I wanted to point out.
Okay, Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Erin, I am uh, new to this, so all of your information is greatly appreciated. So um, with this um, borderland management plan, so a, again, we do this every year? Or do we do this once? How often do we, we have this plan?
That's a great question. Um, you do one borderland management plan that will outline the activities that you'll do at different timing levels. For example, you might go out and do trash cleanup twice a year. But you only do one borderland management plan. You might update it as needed, because you're going to be coordinating with, with others um, regionally to see how things are working. There might be some adaptive management involved, but you really only have to go through this approval process with the service once, the Fish and Wildlife Service.
I see, okay. And then um, again, I'm sorry, I'm ignorant on this. So when developers come in, they, we still have to mitigate their, um, you know, their development, right? So the, the overall plan is this, um, I mean, I guess, help me understand, when, when developers come in, there's still some mitigation that needs to happen with where they build, right? Or is that built into these, this habitat plan and the other open space and corridors that we have? But does that count for the, the development that we do?
That is an excellent and a little bit of a loaded question.
Yeah, totally.
Is it?
Okay, so.
Excellent question.
Perfect. It is, it is a really good question, and it, it really depends on the, the development proposal, and I'll, I'll start there. Um, and if they do need, if, if the project would result in impacts to listed species that would require incidental take permits through the state or federal endangered species act, there, there will be additional mitigation required with those permit, um, with those permits. Um, now, the loaded part of that question is that the original 1997 HMP addressed a number of sensitive habitats, coastal dunes, maritime. addressed a number of sensitive habitats, coastal dunes, maritime chaparral, and 18, 19 other sensitive species. The intent was that that HMP, so so when I said it was federal to federal and it was mitigation for the Army's action, when when the service, when the US Fish and Wildlife Service analyzed the impacts of of the disposal and reuse, it assumed everything in the part, the five parcels, anything that wasn't in a develop, or sorry, any biological resources not in a habitat reserve or corridor, anything with a development parcel. Let me see, I get a little tangled too still. Anything in a develop, all the resources in a bio, all the biological resources in a development parcel would be lost to development. And so the HMP would mitigate for those those species and habitats. However, you sometimes will have other species that might be impacted because we have a lot of other species that would require mitigation. And you'd have to take into account whether whether your jurisdiction or the region as a whole is in compliance with the HMP. And if so, or if not, you might need to double mitigate.
Right.
It is a loaded question, and I'm trying to think of the best way to to address that. There are a lot of tiers, but that is that is why the Fish and Wildlife Service is coming back to all the jurisdictions and saying, hey, you need to get in compliance with your HMP requirements, or you're going to be, you know, responsible for for mitigating what you're already required to do even more. So.
So our HMP requirements is to at least have a BMP.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So then, so we, so we'll have that part covered. And then, as if we do development and there's, we see that there's issues with different species, there may be additional mitigation, but there may be some that are covered under the HMP, and we won't have to mitigate. So there there's like a question on that?
Great job. But great job.
Very good, yeah.
Okay. Applause.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I got.
You summarized it well.
Yeah, that's really good. Yeah, that was really, really, really good. Can I, can I just through the mayor, it was one day, there's a consultation process. That's, I mean, you're you're asking questions, you're asking specific questions that would not be fleshed out until you actually go down the development path and know what the specific impacts are. And then you actually consult with the agencies, and they will tell you exactly what you need to do. And that's the missing, that's the missing point here. Speaking in generalities, it's it's hard because it there's, it's an if-then statement, you know, an unending if-then statement. So.
Yeah, and I just want to, sorry, sorry, Mayor, just to just to go back to, I mean, when we talk about development, I mean, I don't know anything about these parcels, about what's there. I would love to have like a drone tour, a walking tour, I, you know, I want to get out there. Kind of do already, but like legally, get out there and and understand what those parcels look like. So at some point, I'd really like some education for that and even getting some of our residents out there to to understand what these parcels look like would be great.
I would love to host a walk with Nikki Netof or or others that have, you know, I would love to participate in that if 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 the council or others would like that.
Let's schedule that.
Let's do it. Yeah, I like that.
Kim, were you done?
I'm all out. Yes, I'm good.
All right.
You did great, Kim. You did really good. I have to say thank you.
So let me think, I'm looking through my numbers. Federal to federal gets complicated quickly. Do we have any of those sensitive species on our parcel?
Yes.
Okay. And this.
Those species that would require take permits, yes.
Yes, okay. And for folks that are showing up that may not be familiar with the verbiage, take means basically destroying the properties that is habitat for that creature. Is that correct?
Well, I think it's probably easier to, the State and the Federal Endangered Species Act have specific definitions for what take is. It's for general purposes, an impact to that species and or its habitat. The state includes habitat, the feds do not. It's, but I would just, impact is probably good.
Okay. Coverage permits, Office Park. And so this report, and so tonight, DDNA is asking for $74,000 to put this report together. And how, do we have any idea what the annual needs will be after this plan?
Mayor, you were at those meetings.
Which is why I'm asking.
You know, we've thrown around some numbers for a general cost per acre. You know, the city has pretty minor, you know, requirements, you know, you don't have full-on habitat management requirements. Again, we're talking about making sure people aren't dumping, that non-native species aren't going over the border, you know. But you do have a long boundary with the four-door National Monument. And we threw around some numbers. I would say it would definitely be less than 100,000 a year to to maintain and implement those those, those requirements. But again, we're going to do it and cost estimate based on a phased approach, developer, you know, fees. I'm just throwing something out there. I could pull up the number from the forum meetings. But that that was one of the basis for for what you received, for the funding that you received, the city received from fora.
Right.
Was that acreage of borderlands multiplied by a multiplier?
Right, so for the residents that may not be reading the packets, we received 700 and almost $50,000 for this work. So it's not imminent that we'll run out of money, but these questions are critical to understand how long that would last. So that is all I have. Sorry, it's getting a little late. Did I already go out for public comment? I didn't. Okay, let's open for public comment. Dr. Walts.
I'm trying valiantly to turn on my camera so you can see a person.
There you are.
Okay, so CNPS Plant Reserve One predates even the four-door reuse plan. And if I remember correctly, although I didn't do my homework, that's within the footprint that Erin showed us. It's not in the footprint. It's it's so it's not being considered because my question then is, because Plant Reserve One is fully protected as mitigation, I was curious about the overlap between its status as protected mitigation and the the BMP that's being proposed, how those two fit together and if one is folded into the other.
Great, I'm I'm happy to clarify through the mayor, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, Dr. Walts. Know that that parcel is not included. I'm happy to bring up the map again to to show you, but it's not specifically called out in the HMP as a borderland or development with restrictions. Just the five parcels that I identified in the proposal. Again, that specifically about the National Monument. So.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the HMP? I'm seeing no hands. I'm going to close public comment. We'll come back to the council. Any last questions, comments? We are voting to approve the $73,268 cost of this plan this evening. That's what we're discussing.
If there's no comments, I.
I second.
Was there another voice in there somewhere?
Pat seconded.
Pat seconded.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye, passes unanimously. So before we move on, so it's 9:20. I'm wondering, does everybody want like a five-minute stand-up stretch break? Denise is stretching, sitting. Pat, are you okay to keep going?
Yes, I am.
Okay, seeing no desire, we're just going to keep plowing ahead. All right, new business, 6E, discuss salary and compensation for the new city manager's selection process. So the, in my packet, there were two different items that were separated. There was a staff report from Acting City Manager, and then there was a memo from me detailing some some figures. So what we're looking for is the the City Manager Hiring Process Committee has, is narrowing down on the verbiage. Hopefully, that will go out, the announcement will go out on Monday. But as part of the announcement, we wanted to have a range of salary and benefits. And I don't think this has ever been discussed publicly, or at least I don't remember ever having a public discussion about this. And so I wanted to have a discussion about what you think. If you've taken a look at those those numbers, if you've taken a look at the benefits. Let's start with that. Any.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
Well, I mean.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that this this document, and I think this research is important to do. I don't think this is something that you do and then share it publicly. I think that this is a, it's a tool that we use for negotiations because every one of those terms that I saw in there are negotiation, they're negotiable terms. And so I I really don't agree with basically putting this, you know, having this discussion about this. And and the other, the other point that I want to make is that the the executive, whoever whoever it is that comes in, you know, if the city manager comes in, she's going to be, you know, she's going to be, she's an executive, she knows what what her value is, and she's going to negotiate for the salary that's commensurate to her experience. And I think that that is, I mean, she's come in, she'll she'll tell me she wants $250,000 in, you know, 45 days, whatever. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen and then possibly counter, but that all happens, that negotiation all happens in closed session. And by us signaling basically, you know, what our what our price points are, we've, I mean, we're giving away basically a lot of our our not, leverage is not the right term, we're giving away basically our abilities to negotiate. We don't know what that number is, but I'm not, I don't want to give that number to that person. I want that person to come in with that number and then let me determine. I think that this is an important document, but it's something that we should be keeping because this is a competition, or it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a compensation or a comps doc that gives us kind of, you, what's the, what's the bookends? But I will say this, those numbers are old. Those numbers are, I think, about three years old. And then some of the, some of the other assumptions that I that are in there are not necessarily market. And we're not really going to know what market is until we start entering into these negotiations. And we're going to find that out. So, 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 I mean, on that, I would actually propose using, in fact, I'm even, I'll even make a motion to this effect, that we use basically the terminology that we that we had in here. It says the salary commensurate to experience or full-time negotiated status. That basically says the executive comes in and she negotiates basically what her salary is commensurate on her experience. The retirement PERS is the two, two, 2%, at 60, that's something it's easy to do. Medical is also, it's a PERS, the holidays is toll paid holidays. And then the vacation and the management is, we definitely leave that negotiable because, again, these executives are going to come in with an idea of, that could be part of the back and forth. We we give on the base, but we give, but but we cut on the, on the, you know, the off time or something like that. But to put it all, spell it all out and just in lock us in, it it cuts us off before we even had a chance to even kind of negotiate. So, I mean, actually, quite honestly, I'd like to have a discussion more kind of around that. So if if I would, I want to make a motion to have basically our compensation block in that language. And if that works, then we can, then we can have a discussion basically whether or not we agree to that. To me, it's gating, you know, I I don't want to be putting out specifics.
So the data that is on this chart actually came from our HR person. So I don't know where she got it, but I trust her to get those, that data.
It came from Cal Transparency, California.
Did it?
Yeah, which is three years old data.
Okay. And and it's totally fine to put based on, you know, experience. I don't know where you got that verbiage from, but I would like it.
It's from our, it's from, it's from the the, just the job description that we floated for or that we gave to Dino. This is from Dino's, Dino's stuff.
Okay.
I mean, we've done this before. We've actually, and we've gone, we've actually had these kind of conversations already, you know.
Okay. So Pat.
On your schedule that you gave us and was in the packet, I don't understand why assistant city managers were there because that has nothing to do with hiring of a city manager. And also, some, you might say, well, some of these examples that you gave, like seaside, what they're burning now, et cetera. Well, these larger cities have assistant city managers, whereas Delray Oaks is a small city and the city manager does it all. He can, he or she can't pass off this, okay, assistant city manager do this and so on. The city manager does every bit of the work. So I feel that those figures are not pertinent. And I like what John says about holding back and let's, let's negotiate with the person as to some of these perks along here that you listed. Because you can't lose all your negotiating tactics by putting it all out in the open. You need to discuss it with the person. So I hardly agree with what John has has proposed.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, I agree for all the same reasons. I mean, each person's case is going to be different. So I think it makes sense that the verbiage that Councilmember Gagliotti had spoke to, I think, is is the right way to go. Where it talks about experience and full-time negotiated status. So I I think that's the right approach and allow the council to work the actual compensation piece in closed session.
Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, I don't know if, do these positions usually say how much they're paying in their job announcements?
The majority of them do. And it can be a range up to, you know, yes, but it's it's not uncommon for there to be a range.
Well, so I I guess I understand what what Councilman Gagliotti is saying and that we want that ability to negotiate, and I agree with that as well. I also want to be able to put something out there that's going to attract someone who has experience and and interest in coming to our city. So, you know, so I guess, I I sort of want both. I guess I want to be able to negotiate great in the end, but we, I also want to be able to attract people to let them know that we are willing to to pay them, you know, a certain amount. So I, you know, I don't know what that range would be. I also don't know what some of the terms are, so like employee assistance program. Can someone tell me what that is?
I think it's $500, Jim, or Acting City. Um, I think it's $500, Jim, or, uh, uh, acting city manager?
The employee assistance program is a program for, um, mental health and other, you know, counseling and wellness options that the city provides those services when a city employee needs it. So it's kind of like a, an insurance program for those types of issues, whether it be financial counseling sometimes, excuse me, substance issues, you know, mental health, those, those types of things. So EAP is just a, a, a benefit that the city provides.
Okay. And then, um, uh, like administr, so administrative leave, is that just on top of vacation or is that, you know?
Yeah.
I, I guess I don't know what that is.
Um, yeah, it's, um, it, I, I think it probably started at, because this person doesn't get overtime. And so because of their contractual, uh, status, um, and so, yeah, it's, it's always felt a bit odd to me. But, um, it is on top of holidays and vacation.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Just, uh, you're right on the right track there. Uh, other, other employees have a, an opportunity to accrue either overtime or sometimes, um, comp time so they can take in an extra leave, things like that. So, uh, a lot of times in executive positions, department head positions, um, the airports, other places I've been at, uh, they will add executive leave as a, a negotiable benefit.
It's, it's very common.
Okay.
Yeah, everything on here is very common. Um, okay, so I, uh, I'm fine with however you guys want to, want to go. Um, so let's open it up to, uh, the public. Anybody have any, uh, Bill, Ragstil Cronin?
I have been getting kind of in the mix all over the place here. Uh, there we go. Um, so yeah, having the salary ranges is totally normal. I've been in public service, literally, I've spent forty years in public service or thirty-nine and a half. It's very common to have the salary ranges. It's very common to have the benefit package. What you, I agree with Councilman Gagliotti that you want to have that negotiating power or that control when you go in. What you don't want to do is end up sitting there at the city council with a $250,000, $250,000 a year budget and a $500,000 a year candidate. The idea of having that upper number is somebody that wants a half a million dollars a year is not, maybe not going to apply to a city like Delray Oaks, but they may assume we have a lot of money just because of where we are geographically. So you kind of want to have some ranges in there. Anybody that's coming here is going to look at what we paid Dino. They're going to look back at Cal, the, the, I can't think of the name of, the one that John mentioned.
Transparency.
Yeah, so you can go in and you can look and see what Shudo's making over at M1W. You can see what Tim is making over, uh, waste management. So none of this stuff is secret. So you're not giving away the, you know, you're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You're setting some parameters as you go into a negotiation. Um, so that, that both sides can, you know, a person can go in there, look, I was looking for two hundred, you're off in two fifty, what you got in the middle here, you know? Um, and I think that's important when you go out looking for a person of this caliber. You want the best person you can get, and you want the best person you get for the money you got. And again, you just, to me, if you put in, if you don't put any limits on whatever, you may get some very high-priced folks that have great credentials and could do the city some humongously wonderful things, but we can't afford them. So again, I've, I've seen a lot of executive positions go out and they always almost unanimously have a salary range. And it may be very wide. It can be very nebulous. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to come back to the council. So, um, I, any last questions, comments, Pat?
Yes, I, I feel having a range for the salary to be published, but none of the benefits. The benefits are all negotiable, um, and, and to, to show a range of like, uh, maybe a hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred thousand or something. But to specify the range, the low, the high range would be acceptable to me. Thank you.
Uh, John?
Yeah, I, I want the $500,000 a year city manager, I want her to basically apply for this job. And, and then in the interview process, we, you can talk about that. That's, that's totally open. It's like, what is your salary expectation? That's a very standard question to ask. Uh, I've worked for a lot of people, I've, I've applied for a lot of jobs that don't actually have a salary expectation, but I know what I'm worth. And I walk in with that number and it's one of the first, one of the first things, you know, that's asked. So I would ask that person, I would say, yeah, it, once, once I've been wowed by them, I, I want to say, well, so tell me, what's your, what's your salary expectation? And if we get that half million dollar number, then I'm going to say, well, okay, that's, that's not doable with us. Where, where can we work? That gives me then basically the ability, that's, that's the start of the negotiation process is there. If, say, we went to, you know, the one sixty-five to two hundred, the $500,000 a year person, or even the $250,000 a year, you know, city manager would say, uh, that's, and we're self-selecting, you know? Um, so I like basically throwing the net out wide and then giving, giving us, the council, all the flexibility we have to hone in on the actual costs. But I want the talent first. I want, I want to see what the talent's out there. That to me is, is the thing I'm actually quite excited about with, with the selection process is, is, you know, it'll be interesting to see who is out moving around right now. Um, and, uh, and it'll be interesting to see the kind of candidates that we get. So, um, and, and we've, I mean, already we've had, you know, in our first discussion, we're, we are going a long way to reduce the, any, any perceived limits on our hiring processes. You know, we're talking about, you know, getting granular with, with the right language or, or, you know, looking very specifically at our, at our language. We want to cast the widest net. I, I don't think that one of our selection, our pre-selection criteria, or, or, yeah, our pre-selection criteria should be a, a salary range. I think we should get, we should let them walk in. And actually, to Bill's point, I mean, that may be, that we may get better talent than we had anticipated if we don't put a salary range because they do think, oh, wow, it's Monterey Peninsula, of course they're going to be able to pay, you know? And then we can, we can hit them with that one.
Uh, Pat, do you have your hand up again or still?
I do. Um, this is a question for John. How do you feel about on the, um, announcement requesting, uh, resumes, et cetera? Uh, asking the question, what is your salary expectation? What do you think of that?
I think that's, I think that's a great, I definitely want them to tell me. I don't want to, I don't want to tell them anything on what I'm thinking, you know? Uh, and for money, you, you're around salary. So I definitely think, um, that's, that, that's a very fair question, you know? Yeah, I think that's good.
So let's go to Scott Donaldson.
Yeah, I'm not against putting a broad salary range, but I, I think it does make a lot of sense to cast the widest net and, you know, not specify in there.
Okay. I, I don't, I'm sorry, Scott. You, you said yes and then you said no?
No, I, I'm not against a broad range, a salary range, but I think it makes more sense that, uh, getting to what council member Gagliotti had to say, it casts the widest net. I want to try and get as many people as we can to apply for this position.
Okay. And Ms. Shirley?
I, I, I think if we should, uh, I think we should go with what someone would typically see. I'm wondering if we don't put anything, if someone says, well, I'm not going to apply because I have no idea what they're going to pay. And I, you know, I, if we have a $500,000 person coming to our city and then we say, yeah, sorry, no. Um, I, I, I think that's, you know, we need to be upfront with, um, on some level with what we can pay. Um, because I think we could get someone good who's not 500,000. And so, um, I, you know, I guess I'd rather go with the industry standard, which if that is the industry standard is to put a range, then I'd, I'd rather have a range. Um, and, and, you know, it needs to be reasonable too. I mean, we don't want to put ourselves in a place where, you know, we're negotiating high that we can't afford. So, um, and I, I think we should put the benefits because that's going to draw people in as well. Uh, you know, that's going to be very important for people to know, um, you know, in addition to the salary, what they can get. So I guess I'm leaning towards industry standard as far as having a range. I, I can't tell you what that range would be, I guess. Um, so, and I, and I would support putting benefits on there.
So I'm thinking maybe a hybrid of the two. List the benefits and then use some verbiage about compensation based on experience. My concern is, um, you know, the, a city manager doesn't just cost $180,000, right? It costs $240,000.
Exactly.
And so, and just psychologically, the way I think, I mean, I haven't looked for a job for a long time, but if I see up to 200K, I'm walking in going, yeah, you can do 210, right? So, and I don't want to go too low because that, like everybody is saying, will jeopardize folks. So, um, you know, I would like to propose that we do a salary based on, you know, commensurate work and, and list the benefits.
You know, in all my years of employment, I never asked or was told what the salary range would be, any benefits or anything. It was like, do I want this job and do you want me? And then there was the discussion, okay, what, what is the salary? Um, and then if the salary was not agreeable to me, I didn't take the job. If it was, I'd say yes, and, and then go into all the benefits. But it was never publicized. It was always primarily, do I want the job and do you want me? And then you negotiate from then on.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So, I mean, the more I read this, that, this thing we've already, to me, it's perfect. Here, I'm going to, I'm just going to do this. I'm, I make a motion that we use for this language, compensation i- i- in a block. Salary is commensurate with experience and full-time negotiated status. That, that lets, you know, the, it come in. And then retirement PERS, and that's just the two percent a- at sixty, uh, and the city pays five percent employees. That, I mean, I think we are telling them what we will pay on that, and that, that is setting kind of their-
Outlined, yes.
Right, that's, that's their PERS. And on the medical, uh, the city pays employee independence, PERS, health, fully funded vision plan, uh, full-time employees and dependents. I guess that's, that's also very explicit kind of in, in, in there. And then the holidays is, is, that's what everyone gets. That's what, is what public employees. And then I, I want to leave vacation and the management leave as a negotiable because that to me is a throttle. That's something that I can use for, uh, if they want a higher base, then you got to give me something here. If they want a lower, i- if they'll take a lower base, then we'll give them more time off or something of that. I want that flexibility. I, I want to be, I want that tension, and I don't want to give any of that up. So that's my motion. It's, it's basically, it's exactly what we, what we've used in the past. That's why I think it, it works. We, we, we got Dino, which was great. So that's my motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Karen. Uh, Pat, do you have your hand up again?
Uh, sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I want to make sure you're heard. Um, Karen, could you do a roll call, please? Do you understand the motion?
Do, I, I've got my notes.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
All right, so it passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, before we move on, I've been wanting to ask this, and it's probably the most appropriate time is, uh, but when do you plan on recognizing the outgoing city manager?
Um, well, I haven't had time this month, but, uh, perhaps, uh, our vice mayor could help us with that. Would you be willing to pull together a resolution and present that, Pat?
Well, it seems like it's a mayoral responsibility.
Yes, it is, and I'm in the middle of a hiring process and lots of other things. So we have a vice, a vice mayor that, uh, could do it easily.
Yeah, okay, whatever.
I'd be happy to.
Great. All right, thank you. So let's move on to staff reports, uh, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'll be as brief as I can, but I do want to let you know what we've been doing in, in the last month. City Hall, we've been extremely busy with, uh, everything else that's going on in the city manager's selection process. Staff has been publishing and distributing councils, special council and planning commission meeting packets. And, uh, as well as completing meeting minutes for all of those meetings, some of them quite lengthy. So I'd like to, really like to thank Karen because she's put in a lot of time on that. We continue to make progress on the strategic objective list from our, uh, strategic planning session. And the grid in the next couple of months should start showing all that significant process. I'm excited about filling in a lot of those squares and accomplishing a lot of those tasks. Recently, the city transitioned to a cloud-based email server. There's more capacity. The city is growing, yeah, with officers. And our old server, uh, kept going beyond capacity. I will note for the council members, I do have some instructions about some glitches or signing into your city email. And Karen and I will work on getting an email and some directions for that, uh, in the next couple of days. So if you have problems, please reach out. Uh, we've been putting in new processes such as, uh, putting in planning calendars for staff. So we are aware of what needs to be on which council pack and when we have to meet certain deadlines. We've been working on the, um, contract list for all city contracts when it's presented to council. Hopefully next month ahead of schedule, it will be a draft. We will find other contracts that show up through the budgeting process uh, to be added to that or subtracted from it. We have, uh, completed follow-up on, uh, our current follow-up on the short-term rental renewals. Karen and Randy have been working on that. And we completed the required publication of our approved ordinances, the amendment to the used, uh, tax ordinance and the extension of the emergency eviction notice as well. Public Works has been working on cleaning up illegal dumping on South Boundary Road, working with the police department to investigate that. And throughout the city, weed abatement, tree removal, park routine maintenance, uh, lawn cutting, uh, clearing and cleaning out of the pedestrian walkways and also, uh, the stormwater channel on Rosita. Police Department continues to be very busy. Um, we transitioned to the, uh, RIMS RMS software. All staff completed training within, uh, the last week, and we are now up and running on our new software that, uh, the city council so graciously approved. We are also training on i-Supina, which is a subpoena system with the DA's office. It reduces court-related OT costs because officers won't appear. They'll be notified before making the trip out to the court if they don't have to appear. We'll be attending first aid, CPR and AED training. And then, uh, also scheduled to, uh, complete, uh, RIPA training, uh, which is the racial identity, identity profiling act, uh, which will begin next month and will continue for several weeks. It's a new way of doing reporting that is mandated by the state. Additionally, um, we hosted two sessions of a procedural justice, police legitimacy and internal bias training with the CSU MB Police Department. It was, uh, one of three or four, uh, trainings that we have hosted in the last several months, and we are very proud to be the host agency for that. Officer Yanely Cuevas began field training as a reserve officer. You may see her out on the street or delivering packets. Uh, she has previous experience with the LAPD, and she is just sharp and intelligent and a good representation of our department. The inaugural police advisory committee will be held via Zoom on April thirteenth, 2021. We're excited about that and seeing what comes of that. And then our acting chief, uh, with the County Chiefs Association has been appointed, uh, to the MPC Administration of Justice Advisory Committee and also the Emergency Communications Operations Board for 911 and NGEN purposes. So we continue to take an active role in, in regional efforts, uh, and, uh, are, are becoming a, a, a partner with all the other agencies on the peninsula and throughout the county. And then finally, detectives from Delray Oaks recently traveled out of state to follow up on a recent high-profile case. Uh, that, uh, trip in the subsequent interviews, uh, produced significant information related to that case. And, uh, I just want to, uh, tell you how proud I am of the police department and it's a- tell you how proud I am of the police department, and it's a, it's a very in-depth ca- uh, in, in-depth and involved case with a lot of work. And they've, uh, they've done a professional job, and more information on that will be forthcoming. Mayor, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Chris and the team. Um, let's go out for, uh, mayor and council reports. Let's start with, uh, Ms. Lintel.
Thank you. I attended the special city council meeting where we selected, uh, representatives to be on the hiring committee for our new city manager. Um, and I attended the seaside sanitation where we approved the December twenty twenty and twenty, January twenty twenty-one expenditure report. Also, the project updates are included. Canyon Del Ray project is completed. Um, Del Monte is ninety-five percent complete. And the design of the Fremont Broadway is ninety-five percent complete. And working with Tam C on the railroad cras- crossing. Though, this construction should start in the next month or two. And of course, the Rosita Road is completed, that, that project. Uh, Community Human Services, um, I attended the board meeting where our CEO, Robin McCray, reported that the operations of Casa de Noche Buena are running smoothly. CHS and Gathering for Women are cosponsoring a virtual groundbreaking jazz concert fundraiser on Sunday, March twenty-first. So we, you missed that. Unfortunately, I could not attend, but I'm sure it went off well. And, um, Community Human Services has had an opportunity to work with local, a local philanthropist in developing new homeless services in Monterey on Franklin Street. He made a bri- brief presentation at the meeting and answered questions. The board gave direction to staff to determine costs involved for CHS. Really sounds like a, an exciting project, and I hope it works out. It was announced, um, that CHS received a grant of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars as a result of its participation in the twenty-twenty Monterey County Give, Gives Campaign. And, um, we approved the JPA member allocation request. Also approved the trade-in of a twelve-passenger van and the purchase of a ten-passenger van. Uh, the reason for this is the twelve-passenger required special licensing, so it's limited, uh, usage. And the ten does not, so that's, seems like a step in the right direction. And we voted an eleven percent increase in the salary for our CEO who has been underpaid. And as I mentioned at previous, um, uh, city council meetings, that the salute to the flag is returned, but not the invocation. And Mayor Kerr responded that two city councilmen, members could put it on the agenda. My next question, Mayor Kerr, is it true that if you request it be on the agenda, it will, it will be, and you do not need a second member of the city council? And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll be the second member for Pat if you want to, to put the invocation back on, if you want to put that on there. Um, okay, so, uh, there was no, uh, wa- the Water Master and MST were the two board meetings that I went to. But the Water Master was just the TAC. There was no board meeting for Water Master. Um, at the TAC, um, we discussed in details the timing and the deployment of the data loggers, which we spoke of the last time. Uh, this is in response to the board-approved increased monitoring and analysis, um, at four door nine and ten, which is our monitoring wells, which is what, where we're seeing, um, the precursors of saltwater intrusion. The findings, uh, of the more granular data collection will be reflected in the twenty-twenty-one Saltwater Intrusion Report. We polled the preeminent hydrologists and hydrogeologists, most familiar with the basin regarding their opinions on whether, uh, the basin is definitely undergoing saltwater intrusion. Three of them actually sit on the TAC. Um, the overwhelming consensus is that it's probably happening, but that they all want to see the results from the higher frequency monitoring this summer before declaring anything. Um, the experts are cautious, and this is the reason why they're, why they're playing cautious, is that because declaring saltwater intrusion is happening triggers several actions, some very expensive. And the first action verification is currently being enacted. The next four actions are declaration, notification, pump redistribution, and final supplemental, uh, and then finding a supplemental supply in a halt, to halt pumping and then reverse, uh, and reverse intrusion. Um, the minute that that the, the basin master declares saltwater intrusion is actually happening, it goes to court. And then a judge basically then, uh, will, will start to enact some of these things here. These are the facts. These are, these are the, th- this is what's actually happening in the basin. We are currently forty-four thousand acre feet in overdraft in that basin. We continue to take more than fourteen thousand acre feet per year beyond natural safe yield in the basin. So we are continuing every single year to overdraft the basin more than is naturally being recharged into the basin. And none of the water projects, the ASR or any of the recycled water projects are putting excess water in the water. Every gallon put in is a gallon taken out. So we are still in overdrafting. We are still overdrafting the basin. The water ba- the, the basin water levels are normally, or nominally, right now, twenty-one feet below sea level. That's where, that's where they are right now. In the summer, under heavy pumping, we often drop to seventy feet below sea level. The basin has historically been over fifteen feet above sea level. Increased chloride levels are, have been observed in monitoring wells for, for the last five years. Those are the facts. This is, uh, the basin is, in my opinion, and, and probably quite quickly, uh, the, some of the more preeminent hydrogeologists and hydro- hy- hydrogeologists and hydrologists in the area is a ticking time bomb. Um, our hydrogeologist that, that is hired, um, that's been working in the basin for ten years or, or, uh, monitoring the basin for ten years, it will, will openly admit in public meetings, it's not a question of when, it's, or it's, it's not a question of if, it's when. And it's, the when is actually, we're at the precipice of when. So, uh, I will continue to keep ringing this bell, um, until somebody or, until, I, I guess until, until the, um, the public basically takes notice of this. Um, there are, there are, the, the water, people who know about water in the area are actually quite concerned about this. People who don't want to be concerned about it have other agendas, and that's, that, that's again, it's, that's more of opinion than, than, uh, than fact, but, or it's observation. The good news, back to, going to MST, um, so, uh, the board received updates in the COVID response and, uh, and measures in place. We approved a mid-year budget adjustment, which was accretive. Um, we approved a two-year strategic and action plan. Uh, and in that, the, the, the things that were, I thought, very important to kind of note is we're working to decarbonize our fleet, that we're focusing on that, and we're focusing on the dedicated, uh, bus line down the beach. Those are our two major, uh, focus, focus I, uh, strategic focuses, uh, for the next two years. The huge highlight, and this is, this is the great news, was the recognition of, uh, Linda Unrata as Employee of the Month. This is like the fifth time, I don't know, this year or in total, where she's been recognized as Employee of the Month, and she's probably likely to be Employee of the Year. And specifically this month, she was recognized, this is why, uh, this, she was recognized this month for, uh, her quick action that turned a potential tragedy into just a close call. And that was, um, a young pre-teen child with cognitive differences, uh, slipped away from her, from their caregiver at the Salinas Transit Center. The child wanted to go see the trains. Uh, the caregiver was searching for the child in the opposite direction. Linda was headed to the transit center on one of the side streets, noticed or saw the unaccompanied child heading towards the tracks, stopped the bus, got out, approached the child, and brought the child back to the bus, and then called dispatch, who then relayed to Salinas PD, who were actively looking for the child. Uh, and then PD brought the caregiver to the bus, and everyone was reunited. And, um, and it was, uh, and then, you know, as humble as, as, uh, as Linda is, um, she just went right, right, but, right back to work and finished her route and didn't tell anybody. In fact, senior management was not, no one told her, or, senior manager only found out because someone in dispatch, uh, called a senior manager. So she was not looking for any kind of acknowledgement, and she was just giving it, uh, or she, it just came out. MST is now putting her up for, uh, a statewide acknowledgement, um, similar to kind of the Medal of Freedom or something like that. So, uh, I mean, this was, this was kind of an amazing story. And, and I, I've actually never met, uh, Mr. Rod, but she was at the board meeting, and, um, and she's just dedicated. I mean, she's the, she, she was born to be a bus driver, and she, she only ever wants to be a bus driver, and she's the best we have. So that was a really, really good feel, uh, make you feel good story. Um, kind of to touch on, uh, I have one last thing, and, and this was kind of, uh, since this is kind of the free-for-all for, for the council, um, I would like to agendize, um, I mean, if I can get another council member to agree, uh, for next, for, uh, for the next meeting. And what I would like is I would like to discuss basically putting a time limit on these meetings. Um, we, I've done it at other board meetings, for, I had, we had a three-hour time limit, and I thought in four, we took care of, uh, business that was far more complex than this. And, uh, Mayor, I, I mean-
So I just want to have a point of clarity. Alex, um, there's a lot of conversation about things that are not on the agenda. Is there a more appropriate way for these questions and these comments to be addressed?
The, the agenda speaks to, to council announcements, and I think that's pretty broad. I think where we, we need to be careful is where one is making the announcement and, and the other says, hey, that's good. Maybe we ought to do this, or maybe we ought to do that. We just don't want, all of a sudden, we're having a conversation about something that's not on the agenda. Um, certainly, the council members can work through the city manager for these type of things. So it, it's very broad on the agenda as far as, you know, the announcements you want to make, but, but, um, you know, caution should be exercised when, when we get more than, more than one council member sort of, you know, uh, discussing something. We just want to make sure that whatever we discuss, once it turns into a council discussion, is on the agenda.
So, without causing a discussion, without causing a discussion, Alex, without causing a discussion, am I allowed to, um, ask to put, uh, an item, uh, ask of the council to put an item on the agenda for next, uh, for discussion at the next meeting?
Uh, I think that, uh, in, in discussing that, we would necessarily be discussing the topic. I think the better practice is to work through the city manager. Now, if you want to make an announcement, hey, I'm thinking about talking to the city manager about X, Y, Z, I think that's fine. But sort of taking that, discussing that, and voting whether it should go on the agenda, I think the better practice is, is, is to, to work through the city manager, um,
Fair enough.
On, on agendizing something.
Okay, then, then I'll, I'll hear, make, I'll, I'll make the, uh, I'll announce that I plan to, uh, seek another council member to join me in asking to agendize the, a discussion and, and an action. Actually, I'd like an action taken to putting a time limit on our, um, on our council meetings. And that's it. That's my board me- or that's my report.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I visited Integral Innovations, which is our larger, largest cannabis business, and received a tour of their facilities from their CEO, Adam Yater. Um, I completed the required sexual harassment training for supervisors. Uh, also facilitated the delivery of twenty-one oak trees to the Public Works Yard to be planted on the median, uh, on General Jim Moore Boulevard, which is the stretch from seaside to basically, um, the area where the road narrows. Also attended the Butterfly Garden Work Day. Met with Scott Waltz and Fred Watson to discuss, uh, foretag trail considerations for the seventeen-acre property prior to my ad hoc meeting with the Parks District tomorrow. Also conducted a Safeway gift card giveaway where we distributed eighty, fifty-dollar gift cards to our residents. Special thanks to Claudia Campbell, Frederica Jones, Gary Krieger, David Kimball, and Chief Berkwin for your, uh, assistance. Um, also, the Monterey Herald recently released their Best of Edition, and just wanted to throw out there that our car wash and our garden center receive second-place honors. And although his business isn't in, uh, Delray Oaks, it's in PG. One of our residents, Mike Berger, won Best, uh, Auto Repair Shop.
Nice.
Um, the Monterey One Water Board is scheduled for this coming Monday, the twenty-ninth. And I just got the agenda for that today. And one of the items of special importance and attention will be the pure water expansion and the associated SEIR and the costs that are associated with that as it relates to CEQA, legal fees, engineering, and staff payment. I think that's it. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Shirley.
Thank you. Um, a couple of announcements. I signed my name in support of a couple Senate bills. So SB six, which allows for, uh, commercially-zoned underused space for mixed-use and affordable housing. And SB nine, which authorizes, um, cities to approve duplexes and lot splits in both, in cities. Uh, I also want to offer congratulations to Sustainable Delray Oaks. It was ordered, um, we were awarded a grant from the Sierra Club Ventana Chapter for ten thousand, six hundred dollars. And that's to do a wetland delineation study and biological study of Work Memorial, uh, the Arroyo Del Ray and Seventeen Acres. And then we are going to use that information to protect those areas and then also, um, provide that information to the Regional Park District, to Tam C, and then also to the city. So, um, and then also, we can share that with the residents too, so they can better understand the habitats that are in their backyard. Um, I also completed the harassment prevention training and, uh, went to the Butterfly Garden Work Day. Uh, I also went to the Monterey Regional Waste Management Finance Committee meeting where we were, um, informed about the upcoming recommendation for Last Chance Mercantile Operation. Uh, we also reviewed the budget assumptions for, um, the next financial year and then discussed, uh, a remote monitoring and control system improvement that they'd like to make, which we actually approved in the, in the larger meeting. And then we had a brief description on the rebranding that they're going to do. Um, I went to the Ambag meeting where we received an update on the sanctuary and their management plan update that they've been working on for many, many years. And they reviewed lots of different areas, but a couple that stood out to me were, um, that people were just very interested in obviously, uh, protecting wildlife and habitat, and then also addressing the needs for, um, climate change. We also heard about their overall work program and budget, which is in a draft form, which is, we're going to adopt, uh, in May. And then we also, um, went over their Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable, uh, Community Strategies, which is their long-range transportation plan, which is done every four years. They're looking at land use and zoning in all areas, and then trans- the, the transportation project lists across the three counties. Um, they're going to have public workshops in May to review that document if you're interested. Um, I also met with, um, County Supervisor Wendy Rudaskew as a little check-in to see how things are going in, in Delray Oaks. I think she was meeting with lots of different electeds. Um, I ran the Sustainable Delray Oaks meeting on, uh, in, in March where we talked about another workday for the Butterfly Garden, which is coming up this Saturday from nine to noon. Um, we also talked about doing something for Earth Day at the Butterfly Garden. I prepped them on the, um, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three that we heard about tonight. And, um, and then we also talked about the grant that we received and how we'd like to share that information with everyone. Uh, I also went to the Housing Element kickoff with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, which provided, uh, a great history of housing in California and shared the legislation of AB six eighty-six, which will require a balanced approach to eliminate racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. So it was nice to have a forum to learn more about that. Um, and then I met with the Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition, where we were able to talk to different jurisdictions about, um, their housing needs and what's going on with their housing elements. Um, I met with Tim Flanagan, the general manager for the Waste Management District, um, for a while, just to talk about SB thirteen eighty-three, so I could have a better understanding of it and the implications for the city and the district. Um, I also attended a webinar called The American Rescue Plan: What's in It for the Cities by the California League of Cities. So that was really interesting to find out the money that's going to be coming, uh, for us. And so I think that's going to be really important, uh, for our city to talk about what we want to do with that money. It's a, it's an amazing opportunity that we'll have. Um, and then I, uh, went to the board meeting for Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Um, they, we have presentations on, and they, they had a new employee recognition and rewards program. Um, and the big item on the agenda was again, looking at the Last Chance Mercantile. And so the, uh, staff actually had recommended the Veteran Transition Center to run that. Um, there was a big discussion about, um, job pay and, and taking something that was union-paid and paid well, and then transitioning it to a nonprofit that was, um, cutting the- and then transitioning it to a nonprofit that was um cutting the pay substantially. So um, it really was, in my opinion, comparing apples and oranges. It was hard to tell. Our choice was between having the district run the Last Chance Mercantile or have uh the Veteran Transition Center or another nonprofit called Second Chance. And uh so ultimately, we ended up by um punting for another month and not making a decision and asking staff to come back with more information so that we can better compare um those options. And then um I attended the Quarterly Brunch for Communities for Sustainable Monterey County, where I was able to talk about the things that are going on with Sustainable Delray Oaks. We heard about the Nativity Creek Community Garden and we also heard a presentation on Fortag. And um and then I I did the county updates on Mondays too. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. So um each Monday, I attend the Monterey County Elected's Meetings where we receive COVID vaccine and uh testing information. The last month, there has been so much movement with the county finally leaving the purple tier, vaccinations being open to a larger population, and overall, a sense of hope that we may be getting closer to normal. Um, yet I would ask everyone to continue being cautious and observe mask-wearing and physical distancing. Um, I have weekly meetings with the Acting City Manager on day-to-day matters and updates. This month, I have been having regular meetings with Kay, who is at RGS, who is our HR person, to discuss the city manager hiring process and committee and um all of that. Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, um, was the TMC Board Meeting. The highlights are um in the packet, but there was one item just that discussed that I followed up on afterwards. At Play is an educational program um put together around transportation. They have a little color coloring book, matching cards with local plants and animals, and a backpack to carry your items as you go on a neighborhood scavenger hunt. Um, I reached out to the lead. We met on March fifth to see how Delray Oaks might have something similar to tie to the Fortag Trail that's to diversing the city. Rather than focus on transportation, it could focus on the history of the different areas of our city, including education about the different natural environments um and animals that are so called Delray Oaks home. On another TMC note, which you may or may not have seen, a program we supported last year has brought a handcar handcar to the Marina portion of the rail tracks. It will only be here for a limited time, so if you get a chance, you can go out and take it for a spin. Thursday, February twenty-fifth, I completed my regular um ethics training with an assortment of other local electeds. It's always a great refresher. March fourth, I joined um the League of California Cities Climate Change Roundtable. It was incredibly valuable to hear what other jurisdictions around the state are doing. The top items being done that I think we should undertake include the um ordinance for electrification of all new residential, uh, climate action plans. I'm surprised at how many cities are actually redoing earlier plans. Um, microgrids to weatherize against blackouts. There are planning for EV charging stations. Um, uh, in addition, they had a climate emergency resolution. Um, uh, leaf blower bans and um they're highlighting their green businesses. We got to hear from a Heelsburg councilperson about their first-in-the-state solar project that was put over the wastewater ponds that will power their facilities. Um, in addition to us participating in a CCA, uh, Fortag will provide safe walking and biking through a large part of the city and Sustainable Delray Oaks does our creek cleanups. Um, Councilwoman Shirley and I met with Acting City Manager and Legal Counsel to discuss the garden center progress and the need for an end-state discussion. Uh, the mayor's meeting was on Friday, March fifth. Congressman Panetta joined us, who was very excited about all of the legislation that the House is passing, including the rescue plan, gun control, and immigration reform. This was obviously early in the month before uh some of those votes happened. The Peninsula Mayor's participated in a letter of support of our Regional Water District requesting an extension of the CDO deadline. All of us as water ratepayers have done an amazing job conserving water use and should not be penalized for the water source delays and shenanigans. March eighth, I uh, like the other council, uh, attended the Special City Council meeting to select the City Manager Hiring Committee, which includes Karen Minami, Acting Chief Borquen, Business Owner Dr. Marsalais, and Residents John Romel Uy, Andy Clark, and Louise Getzel. I would also like to thank Dr. Scott Waltz, Dr. Salin Penay, Helene Tregenza, Mary Sol Singh, and William Mason for expressing their interest. May tenth, I attended the League, the Regular League of Women Voters uh meeting with Monterey Regional Parks District uh Executive Director Rafael Pion. I received a phone call just as he was starting to discuss the frog pond, however. So I look forward to hearing more about those thoughts when uh Councilmember Donaldson and I meet with their team to discuss tomorrow. May eleventh, had a very quick check-in with Supervisor Root Askew. We are hoping to have her come and present her priorities at an upcoming council meeting. March twelfth, I too attended the Housing Element kickoff hosted by Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. Over a hundred and twenty-five participants, including our supervisor, state and assembly reps, water commissioners, carpenters' unions, homeless service providers, and more were in attendance. Um, we discussed obviously being prepared for the regional housing numbers uh coming in twenty twenty-two uh with the focus on how to ensure housing needs are met with affordable, dense, inclusive, and transit-oriented plans. Uh, on March fifteenth, I attended a Zoom meeting put on by the California Cannabis Authority. Their joint powers agreement involving several California counties that uh hosted an informational meeting about their, they have developed a sophisticated big data analytic platform that synthesizes information from various sources to provide local real-time reporting as well as predictive insights from all the cannabis companies. Um, it's pretty amazing to be able to tell what each store has in inventory, how much they're um purchasing and they're selling to help uh counties and cities be able to better track um what's going on in their cannabis companies. Mary Zeeb, our county treasurer and assessor, is the current president. Also, on March fifteenth, uh, we had our City Manager Hiring Committee meeting, exactly as I had hoped, with each participant bringing their unique and thoughtful perspective to the hiring process. Louise and I have been working on verbiage and Kay and I have been digging into salary and benefits. Our next meeting is this Friday to finalize the job announcement verbiage that will hopefully go out on Monday. March seventeenth, Jim Russo of Russo's Market reached out to me about an idea of a weekly sale of produce from their business, something like a farm stand. He's hoping to bring Christine, who is formerly of Stone Creek Kitchen, along for sales of the much-loved and much-missed paella salmon and a few of the other goodies that she makes. We met with Acting City Manager Hoyn to discuss how the city can help that happen. Yesterday, Acting City Manager and I met with Robert Roberto Moreno uh to discuss the transition to RGS and a few of the bumps along the road. We're anticipating the audit uh finally coming to council next month. As the first female mayor of Delray Oaks, I it would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge March as Women's History Month. Far too often, women's contributions have gone unnoticed in our history books. Do not tell the rich story of women's leadership and courage. So I hope all of you um honor a woman in your life. On that, I am done. And let's uh move on to correspondence. Uh, if you note in the packet, there's correspondence from MST, TMC, North Salinas Valley Mosquito Abatement District, the United Veterans Council highlights. There's a nice letter from Arbor Day Foundation on our second year as an Arbor City and a letter from Casa regarding Casa de Nochebuena. Let's move on to closed session.
Mayor, I just had a question for you. So you received the letter from the president of the Arbor Day Foundation with a press release? I was just wondering what you plan on doing with that?
Um, I can talk to uh Acting City Manager Hoyn about it. Are you interested in working on something?
No, I just wondering if you plan on putting out that press release and spreading that story?
So I'll work with Acting City Manager on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move into closed session now. Uh, is there any public comment on closed session items in initiation of litigation to potential cases? Seeing no uh public comment, I'll come back to council. And for those of you uh that would like to stay, you're welcome. Otherwise, the next meeting is April twenty-seventh at six o'clock. So on that, um, if we can move to uh closed session. So um I'll turn it over to our Legal Counsel, Alex Orca.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to both items of anticipated litigation, um, updates were given to council. Council provided direction, but no reportable action was taken.
All right, thank you. Next uh meeting date is Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM. On that, we are adjourned. Have a lovely.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.